All right, well, let me call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Start with having the town administrator read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we amend and approve the agenda and then a period of public comment. And then the first item of the night will be reorganization of the select board. And then number two is consent agenda with payroll warrant and minutes of April 30th and May 14th of 2020. And next meeting dates of July 9th and jointly with advisory on, no, jointly with advisory on July 9th. And then July 23rd is another day. Consideration of endorsing police department's statement regarding death of George Floyd is item three. Number four is Coolidge Crossing update with Roy McDowell of Baystone Development Corporation. And then number five is consideration of appointments to the Sherburne Police Department. That's Lieutenant David Bento. And then
Am I so connected?
Is consideration of appointment to open space committee and energy committee for Tom Trainer.
Paul, he's written the agenda, we can hear you.
To expire June 15th, 2023. And then number six is five Washington Street, consideration of acquisition. Number seven is COVID-19 update with Darryl Beardsley, Chair of the Board of Health. Number eight is 2020 annual town meeting with consideration of reducing or adjusting 2020 ATM quorum. Review of 2020 annual town meeting warrant and consideration of splitting the warrant. And town meeting date and location currently set at Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, or Saturday, August 15th, 2020. I think the 25th is the only one that's been voted. Number nine is update from Sean Colleen, DPW Director regarding roadside tree removals by the town and ever source. And then the last item is the routine business finance director, consideration of deficit spending.
Hello?
One 12th budget for FY 2021.
Anybody there?
Town administrator, ratification of fire chief Zach Ward's employment agreement. And see select board member reports. Then adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. The two exemption items are item one, exempt in chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection three. Discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair, so declares library. Item two, MGL chapter 30A exemption, section 21A, number six. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And that is it.
Right, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Oh, moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Waldron. I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Drenses.
What am I voting on? I just got disconnected.
Agenda, the agenda.
Just the agenda.
Yes. Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
All right, can I vote aye, so five zero. And then we had public comment. I know Sean just said he had a public comment and I know Jeff Waldron has one as well. So go ahead, Sean, why don't you go start?
Mine was quick and it was more relevant a few minutes ago. The, just about the entire fire department is out on a pretty hot brush fire up at 11 Nason Hill. There, it's under control, they're cleaning up now. I just wanted to say a few words, it's pretty hot, pretty dangerous out there, so. That's all, I was just thinking of that.
Very dry. As Zach texted me, they got 30 firefighters out there.
Wow.
And they got Holliston is covering our firehouse.
Just to show how dry it is, this is from the lightning strike, the, what, five nights ago?
Wow.
Read Kendall.
Oh, did it?
All right, um, Jeff, go ahead, you have a public comment as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to really recognize Jackie Morris and her team for doing a stellar job managing the election, you know, the first one, she was running by herself and a totally new environment with the COVID environment and extensive mail-in provisions for balloting. So I just, I know she was working crazy hours and Tony Abril as well. And her poll workers were Jeanne Guthrie, Sue Kelleher, and Renee Montella and probably some other people I'm not aware of. But I really just want to thank, I don't think she's on, but thank Jackie for doing it. And obviously, you know, this is a big deal because, you know, we get this mail-in balloting down this November. This is a try run, November is going to be a big challenge in a lot of places. So anyway, I just think we're very lucky to have her.
Thanks, Jeff.
Congratulations to her as well on the election. Yeah. Her personal win.
Absolutely. Okay, so the next item is reorganization of the select board. We need to elect a chairman, a vice chairman, and a clerk. And I would like to nominate Eric Johnson for chair. Do I have any other nominations for chair?
Can I, um?
Yeah, go ahead, David.
I just wanted to say that under the selectmen rules that anyone can nominate themselves and no second is needed.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right, if we have no other nominations, I'll take a vote to elect Eric Johnson as the new chairman of the select board. Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Drenses.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Abstain.
And I vote aye, resounding aye. So congratulations, Eric, you're the new chair, you can take over from here.
All right, I am going to ask though, George, if, um, if the vice chair, after we vote a vice chair in, can handle item number four. It's an item of which, um, you know, I can listen in on, but I may abstain based on how the direction goes on that, on that particular. And with that note, I actually would like to nominate George Morrell as vice chair.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Chuck?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And George?
Aye.
And I, I'm as well.
Great.
Could I just say thanks to George for his year of service as chair, much appreciated. And a lot of work went into it, particularly during this pandemic and it's appreciated.
Thank you, Paul.
Especially transitioning to the Zoom format was very smooth and, uh, seriously, I think that, that's, that's quite a challenge.
Yeah.
I'm about to find out.
And I'd like to echo that. George certainly had an easy act to follow. But he did a terrific job, he was really very well organized and well-run, so thanks, George.
Okay, are there any nominations for clerk?
I'll nominate Jeff Waldron. Second.
Okay, um, take a, uh, George?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I, I as well. Well, congratulations all. Uh, next item up is the consent agenda. Is there any discussion before we vote on the consent agenda?
I had a change on one of the votes where I was recorded as voting no when I actually made the motion and advocated for it. I hope that got corrected.
Yeah, I saw the corrected minutes, Paul, they came around.
Okay, it was corrected.
Yes, okay. Very good.
Thank you.
That being said, um, any, uh, anyone move to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Chuck?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I as well, so it moves. Okay, uh, the third item on the agenda, it's a consideration of endorsing the police department's statement regarding the death of George Floyd, George Floyd. Um, it's in your background material, it was also posted on Nextdoor Sherburne. Um, is there any discussion amongst the board before we, uh, before we endorse this or consider it?
Eric, I'd just like a brief comment. The posting on Nextdoor was done by Officer Godino. I don't know if it was his sole penmanship or somebody else was involved in writing it, but it was really very well-written and well-considered, so, um, well, we don't typically, shouldn't be, uh, it should require a vote of the board, meeting as the board. I fully support every word and kudos to Officer Godino if he's the drafter of it.
He's, he's on here also, Chuck, I believe.
I do as well. The one in our background material also came from Dave Bento, I think they're essentially the same statement. Is that true, Lieutenant? Sorry, I put you on the spot. Someone unmuted.
Sorry, I was, uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, just to clarify, Detective Godino reached out to me and he wanted to put this together as well as many of the other officers. So there was a lot of conversation between the officers and Detective Godino did do the majority of the, uh, the writing. So I agree with you and I want to thank him as well and thank you for considering this.
And it is well done, so congratulations to all involved, really, it definitely has my support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul, I think does his hand up if you.
Oh, all right, Paul.
Yes, I wanted to first commend the police department for issuing the statement. It could not have been more timely when they had issued it. And I, as a selectman, and I think the whole board is going to join with me on this and echoing the sentiments that are expressed here. Particularly the notion that all of us can learn and all of us can systematically examine ourselves and our government and our institutions to remove any vestige of racism or unequal treatment for any people that we all believe in, a rule of law and a rule that all people should be treated equally without regard to national origin, race, all of those issues. So I stand by this 100%. And thank again the police department for issuing it.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, is there any more discussion before we entertain a motion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
That you endorse the statement has provided in our background material, okay. Um, a second?
Second.
Okay, take a roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, Chuck?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
What?
How do you vote to, um, to, I'm taking the roll call vote? You moved, George, I'm sure you're going to vote yes.
Paul says yes.
Okay, and I as well. Um, again, well-written, congratulations, and it's proof that, you know, we constantly need to move forward as a society on this matter.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, thank you, Lieutenant, thank you.
Thanks, Lieutenant, thanks, James, he's on the call.
Okay, the fourth item is Coolidge Crossing update, if it's okay, I'd like to pass on to George, the vice chair.
Well, I can handle this for you, Eric. Um, I see Roy and Todd and the other Roy are all on here, so I've handed over to you guys. I know you wanted to present what you've come up with for, since the last time we talked, so I'll let you make a presentation, go ahead.
Well, thank you, my name is Roy McDowell, uh, with us from the Baystone team, I'm Roy McDowell III, my son Todd McDowell and Eric Swenson. Uh, we have presented to you and we'll go through them tonight, Todd will put them up on the screen. Uh, we have some, um, site plans, we have a rendered site plan as well. We have some elevations, front sides and rear of the buildings, including the clubhouse. We have some footprints of the buildings that you'll be able to see, well, I guess we'll go right into it. So we, 84. That, that's fine. So what you're looking at here is 84 and 86 Coolidge, we have under agreement the adjacent parcel. So our original plan had all three buildings on one site and, or actually two at one time, but they were much larger. As you probably know, earlier versions of this through another developer, we're looking at possibility of four stories. By spreading out the buildings the way we have, we've made the buildings actually smaller, especially the front building closest to the street is the smallest and they're all no more than three stories. You'll notice we've changed the lot line configuration somewhat, you'll see that better in a rendering. As you drive in, there's a very small clubhouse building on the right. There's an area that we call sort of an outdoor area which would have a pool in it. You'll see the three buildings, you'll also see some very small shaded buildings. What those are, those are garage buildings that we think, given what we think the demographic audience is going to be here, we think to be a Philly significant empty nester audience here. And that's the reason why, even though the buildings are three stories, we're proposing putting elevators in all the buildings. And we really think there'll be a very large demand for, uh, garage space for cars, especially in New England weather. So this plan also shows, we recently met with the Conservation Commission and did a, we flagged the wetlands. We did a walk with them for the purposes of doing some testing of soils. And, uh, we had a meeting with them, we've got a notice of intent on both parcels. And the buildings, as we are showing them, are all outside the 50-foot buffer. Todd, if you could show us the color rendering, by the way, any questions before I move on? If not, so this will give you a little better understanding of it. The light green area is what would be remaining of 86 Coolidge, there was a house there now. And we would probably do some minor restoration work of that house, reconfigure the lot lines. And then this is the layout of the three buildings. Uh, you'll notice as an area to the upper portion of the, between the first two buildings, sort of a lighter green color. That is a wetland area, although frankly, it's mostly a meadow. Occasionally, there might be a small amount of standing water, but we think it's going to be a very nice view from the back of these two buildings. The building, the furthest building into the left, uh, you'll see there's a wooded area in front of that, that will stay wooded. And it'll be a nice buffer, you probably won't even see that building from the street. We're also intending on putting in some sizable scales landscaping and trees to minimize the visual effects from Coolidge Street. We also are going to be in discussions with the MWR TA to possibly, in this location, see if we can get them to do a bus stop, we think that would be very nice to have. We just, we just recently did one in Framingham and it worked out quite well. The other real advantage on this project and Mark Mastriani is from Polte is on the call as well to answer any questions you may have about sewer or water. It's our intention to work with Framingham on water and Natick on sewer. And that resolves what was a real issue in earlier versions of what do you do about water with wells? And what do you do about sewage, given sewage treatment plants? And the nice thing about this now is if we can get Framingham water in Natick sewer, those issues go away. If you don't have any questions on this one, we can move on to some elevations.
Yes.
Okay. We'll do building floor plans.
Mr. McDowell? Did you have, yeah, Chuck Young has a question.
Sure.
What are the plans for the 86 Coolidge, what's going to be remaining, um, on that lot?
So what will remain is the houses there now will stay in this, we reconfigured the lot line. So if you look at the, where the back building is, that parcel was part of 86, so we're basically carving that off, adding that on to the remaining parcel and the 86 will then have the remaining land. And at some point, assuming this all goes through and we close on that, once we reconfigure the lot lines, we'll be probably selling that house.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have the footprint of each building. And you'll see it's a, it's a typical double-loaded corridor. Uh, the units all have an outside deck, there's a combination of one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, and we have some three-bedroom units as well.
Roy, I will mention this is a footprint for buildings two and three, the front building is slightly smaller, it's two units less per footprint, per footprint.
Yeah, we purposely kept the smallest building in the front. Could we go to the next one, Todd? And this, I believe this is the smaller building. And you'll see.
This is the second floor.
This is the second floor.
Oh, you got the point.
Building, we showed each floor of the largest building, the, the smaller building would be limiting two of these units.
And again, each building has an elevator, uh, we're going to have some common space on the lower level. Uh, the end units you'll see are usually two bedrooms, sometimes three bedrooms. And the nice thing is each, each unit has a deck, which is a very nice feature, that's not always the case. Could we move on to the next one, Todd? So this, this will give you a sense of elevations, what we tried to do is break down the mass of the buildings. The darker areas that you see are actually going to be stone. So we're going to have accent of stone at various locations on the building and then, sorry? Okay, stone, and then we're going to do clapboards and then in various locations, we'll do a board and bat in detail. And then, of course, you can see all the decks, this is another elevation, very similar, except that again, stone at the base, again, base, middle, top, breaking down the architecture, so it breaks down. Say again?
The rear elevation.
Yeah, and this would be facing towards what we call a wetland, but it's really a meadow. So I think that would look nice. Next one, Todd. This is a look of a typical unit type A, this happens to be a two-bedroom unit. So you'll see there's two bedrooms is the living area in the center and deck off the back. And this is an open-style kitchen, so when you walk in, there's a, there's an island there, it's a, it's a wide-open kitchen. So you'll look right through the whole unit from the kitchen area, it's very typical in today's design world. And there's a two, every two-bedroom has two baths. Again, another detailed layout. This particular one is a two-bedroom, you'll see the walk-in closets, good-sized bathrooms, again, open-style kitchen. Again, viewing out towards the deck and out to the back. And these are the various floor plans, again, mixtures of ones, twos, and threes.
These are the one-bedroom units. And this is a three-bedroom unit.
Under, under the 40B rules, you, you are required to have a certain number of three bedrooms. Now, this, this is a very early sketch, so don't take this roof literally because it's frankly way too much roof. But this, this will give you an idea of the footprint of what, this is the clubhouse. So this would be the clubhouse and a leasing office, you'll have a leasing office, you'll have a fitness center, you'll have a gathering area for people to come and enjoy themselves. And we're probably going to add some eyebrows and some details to break down this mass because we want it to look much more attractive.
And that building goes up front here and that would kind of, that'd be the scale that you would see when you're driving down Coolidge versus the three-story building behind that.
So the nice thing about that is when you're driving in, this building is going to look like a home, basically, it's about the size of a house. Not as tall because it's only like one and a half stories, it won't be two stories. And again, just, we have some garages along the backside, so it's really breaking down the mass and really screening somewhat the first building. And at some point, if, if the select board and/or planning board is EBA, want to do a tour, we'd be very happy to do a tour because we're going to stake out all the buildings, so you can see where the corners are. You'll be able to see the relationship of the buildings to the street.
Have you started clearing some land there already?
No, we have not. We won't touch anything as far as clearing until we get approvals.
Well, I thought it'd be easy to actually see the stakeouts, that's all I was asking.
Oh, well, the two front buildings is clear enough, you'll be able to see them. It's really the third building in the back that would be more challenging.
Is that all wooded now, Roy?
Yes, the area where the third, the furthest building in is all wooded.
Okay.
Now, you'll notice, if you look at the top of the page, the black and white buildings, that would be the closest backside of the Polte project.
I see.
Again, it's all wooded back there as well, so fairly well-screened.
I mentioned the entrance, uh, near 86 Coolidge would be the main entrance with the other entrance, uh, by the power line easement being for fire access as well, we'd have a gate, uh, to that access road to the Polte development in the rear as well. And that'd be, you know, if required for fire access only.
Does each unit have its own heating and cooling?
Yes.
System? Okay.
What kind of heat?
What, what is, what kind of heat is it?
It's going to be gas heat.
Gas, heat and cooling?
Oh, the cooling will be electricity.
Okay. And Roy, is there a gas line on Coolidge?
There is, and there's sufficient capacity.
Great, good, that surprises me.
Because some places in town, there's not gas on every street in town, so I was, I wasn't sure.
I couldn't remember if it's a six or an eight-inch gas main, but it's a Philly sizable gas main. Mark, do you remember if it's a six or an eight-inch?
That might be a four-inch gas, I'm not sure.
I know we checked and we're.
I, I know it's not less than a six, though, and I, I've been told that it's got sufficient capacity.
Six is a six-inch main.
Yeah, this, this is Mark Mastriani from Polte Homes, yeah, Roy, I don't remember whether it's a six or eight either, but I know I've talked to the gas company numerous times and they're, they've, um, communicated that there's plenty of capacity to me as well.
And Sean Colleen just said, Sean Colleen just clarified, he would know, Sean, if you could unmute again, what was it that you said?
I'm not sure about the line feeding from Kendall, but Coolidge is a six-inch, it's marked out, I think in front of that property, it's a six.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mark, would you mind giving us an update on the progress with Natick and Framingham?
Yeah, that would be fine, you know, first of all, uh, so again, this is Mark Mastriani, uh, here representing Polte Homes in New England. Uh, I just wanted to thank David Williams and the, and the Board of Selectmen for hosting this meeting for Roy and his team. I, you know, I'm looking at the list of our participants and there's, it's pretty incredible list of, of attendees that you have here, you know, in this Zoom meeting format. Uh, and I just wanted to thank Roy, Roy and Todd and Eric and, uh, the other Roy, and, and his Baystone team for joining, you know, my company here at Polte Homes, you know, to, uh, to join with us to develop Meadowbrook Commons and Coolidge Crossing, you know, Polte, you know, we're very excited to work with Roy and his team. You know, he's a high-class developer, local developer in this area with a long history of very successful development. So I think it's a great asset to us, uh, to have Roy as a partner, and I think it's a great asset to the town of Sherburne to have Roy, um, you know, participate or, you know, um, join us here in this development. Um, you know, with that said, a long-winded answer, um, as far as sewer, so I've been working, with, uh, the, the town of Natick and their team, specifically, uh, mostly Jeremy Marsette and Tony Camo and Bill Shinard, uh, those are the, the town of Natick, uh, department heads that I've been, um, mostly dealing with. And also their, um, their peer review, uh, engineer, uh, that they hire to do a capacity analysis of their sewer system adjacent to, adjacent to the town of Sherburne, specifically it's Spine Street Sewer System. And, um, we've had, uh, we've made a lot of progress and we have a tentative framework agreement, written but mostly verbal agreement of a framework of that, um, Natick is willing and able to service sewer to, to both of these projects here in, um, Sherburne. Uh, the town manager has, um, conceptually agreed to this concept and to the, to the draft framework. And the Board of Selectmen, I am told, also discussed the, um, the sewer agreement and these projects and also is in, um, you know, agreement, um, in supportive of, of the providing sewer to these projects. The status is that we are waiting for, uh, the town of Natick Town Council to draft, to memorialize basically, you know, the, the draft framework agreement for us so that, um, you know, we can move forward with the real official agreement that, you know, takes time and involves a lot of details and specifics and it involves, you know, certainly, you know, the town of Sherburne and, and, you know, my company and, and the town of Natick to, to, and MWRA to arrive at a, you know, a fully executed IMA. But, um, the town council right now, I'm told, is working on like a, a will-serv letter that, you know, that we all could have as their commitment to provide sewer. Um, and it will set the framework of, of certain mitigation commitments that my company has made to the town.
Hey, Mark, Chuck Young here, who's, who's, uh?
Chuck Yon here. Who's, who's uh Natick's Town Council, if you know?
Oh, I, I knew you were gonna ask that.
Maybe David knows.
Uh, I don't. I don't recall their Town Council.
It's not Chris Patrini, is it?
No, that's the city of Framingham.
Right. Right.
Um.
Definitely not.
It's, I, I, it might be the firm Toomey Hess, Hess, and there's two other names. Somebody from that, from that firm.
Great, thanks.
Yes. Uh, we could get to that information, though. I, I don't know if anybody from Natick is on, is on this call. I know Jeremy Marsette uh is on vacation this week. Uh, otherwise, you know, uh, I'm sure he
Hi, Mark. Yes, I'm on the call as well. Uh, Jeremy Marsette here, Director of Public Works for the town of Natick.
Great.
And yeah, first north Lahane is at the well, we
We, we can't hear you. You're, uh, there's a lot of interference if, I don't know from where, but Jeremy, can you try again?
Sure. Uh, yes, our Town Council is Karis North with the firm previously mentioned. And she's well along with the review of the draft letter of intent uh or the, you know, the will serve letter um which we've agreed to in concept. The Board of Selectmen have discussed and support uh along with town administration. And um, you know, we've had a full peer review by our engineer and actually just had uh successfully uh received MWR approval for another sewer service connection outside of town. So we're, we're well versed with that process and are looking forward to getting on uh with this project.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, that's, that's incredible. Thank you, Jeremy, as well, especially I know you're, you're away this week. So um, we all appreciate you being here and taking the time. Um, the, so the other, so that sewer. The other utility is uh water. And that is coming from the city of Framingham. And um, we've um spent an equal amount of time um, you know, coordinating and meeting and working with the city of Framingham and specifically uh Jim Barsante and his team. Uh, and, and they've also engaged uh their a peer review engineer, uh, the company Beta Group. And Beta Group has been spending an incredible amount of time um, doing flow tests and really uh w- working and reworking their uh the city of Framingham's water distribution system model. Uh, and we've been really, really focused uh on the engineering and, and the model to really ensure that that the city of Framingham had plenty of water to not only service, uh, you know, these developments, but also to make sure that there was no impact to the city of Framingham's um water system for their own, for their own residents. So, you know, we've been really spending a lot of time um, working on the model, really working on um the engineering aspects. And I think very, very recently, we, I think we've arrived at the final model, which um my understanding uh, you know, has, is a very favorable conclusion. And um, it seems tentatively to show that um, the, the city of Framingham will, will have plenty of water to um safely and, and sufficiently service these projects as well as, you know, protecting their, their city and and their residents and, and all of their needs. So um, you know, that's where we stand with Framingham. Um, I don't have uh a tentative framework agreement with the city yet. Um, but I think, you know, those discussions are imminent. And all of our discussions that we've had, although there's no commitments, uh, you know, we've, we've been working very cooperatively, you know, for a long time. And I think there's a mutual uh understanding that this is, this um this is what, you know, we want to do and, and Framingham uh seems, you know, uh willing to participate and to help us here. And um uh, so that's the update. It's been very, very positive. And uh, and I think we'll, we're making good progress, um, you know, now. And I know, you know, I don't want to put uh Jim on the spot, but I know we, I, I, I believe we have Jim Barsante from the city, you know, on this call uh as well. And but uh, yeah, that's, that's kind of the update for uh for Framingham Water.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, go ahead, Roy.
I was gonna thank Mark for that. I know he's done a tremendous job working on this. I will say we, we've worked a lot with Pulte over the last ten to twelve years, so I think we work well together. And I think having water and sewers frankly makes both of these projects work. And we look forward to working with uh the town of Sherborne, its various boards and uh getting something done that we think could be a very nice asset for the community.
Great. Roy, what is the um, the next step for your, for the process at this point?
The next step um after we have this meeting this evening is we're gonna finish our paperwork so we can file with Mass Housing, get on the docket for that. And um we're still working, you, as you know, with the Concom. It's, we're gonna go before the ZBA. And um, we'll start that whole process. Hopefully by the end of July, the first week of August, we'd like
When, when do you anticipate filing with Mass Housing?
Either the end of July, the first week of August.
Okay, because I know part of that, if the board so desires, we've talked in the past about putting this as a lip where we would have a letter of support from our select board that would go with your application to Mass Housing. I think I'd like our board maybe to discuss that a little bit and, you know, may, maybe not at this meeting, but we'll have, have to, I want to have that ready for you if it's something that the board does so desire.
We very much appreciate that, and we think that would help the process tremendously.
George. David, yeah, go ahead.
There were um two draft letters in your packet.
Mm-hmm.
We also have a, a letter to work with from Baystone. It would be good if you um if the board just authorized me to finalize the letter and and get it to Baystone.
Okay, let's to hear from some of the other board members. I know um Eric is sitting out on this one, but I'd like to hear from Chuck and Paul and Jeff. Um, kind of where we're at on this.
George, will you be taking public comment as well?
Yes, yes, Neil, I'll, I just, I can, I can recognize you. I'd like to hear from the board first and then, then I'd love to hear from your perspective from the Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Jeff, Paul, Chuck, anybody?
George, I'm happy to start the um uh, from the beginning, the uh ability to uh hook up to Natick and Framingham sewer and water was with, but critical. So I'm pleased to hear about the progress. And one of the best things is it allows a relocation of the building as uh the, I think John Higley and ear- early on noted in Gino as well. Um, it allows uh, or a much less imposing uh, the, the blueprint from the, the street with a three story building, the setback, having the uh community center building in front of it. So uh, the progress, I'm really pleased to hear about the progress of both Natick uh and with the town of Framingham. So um, that, the thanks for bringing us on this prog- that progress. I think it's really critical to the uh overall footprint of the uh of, of the building. So that, that's, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, yes, I, I, I would like to defer the suggestion made by David Williams until we actually get further along and see the letters and and what they actually say. And we're meeting, I think, fairly regularly. What, what did we decide for a summer schedule? I, I, I think we're meeting like every other, every other week.
July ninth, we're meeting with advisory and then we have another meeting the twenty third, I think. So that, that, Roy, if we voted on something on the twenty third, that's soon enough for you, correct? If that, if we so desire?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. Uh, that's, that's, that makes sense, Paul, because then we can also hear. I know Neil Kessler has some comments to make from Conservation. We'd want to hear what they have to say. I'd love to get a little feedback from the planning board as well.
Yeah, I agree with Paul also, George.
Okay. So Jeff, do you have anything else to say in there? Or should I have Neil? Go ahead.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, Neil Kessler could. If you want to make some comments, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so a couple, I'll, I'll wear two different hats. The first hat I'll wear is Conservation. Um uh, so you can see actually a little bit on this, on this uh rendering that there are wetlands that are close by. So obviously, we're gonna have to do a fair bit of work to understand stormwater impacts, just how close they are to wetlands. And even if it is a wet meadow, I would note that regulatorily wet meadows, a wetland, and so it right, it's regulated just as if it was an open water wetland. So it is gonna just, you know, there's gonna, we have nothing before us. We don't have an NOI yet for this, for this project. This is, so you know, from a conservation perspective, I think this is you know, this is a wait and see and we'll take a look at it and apply the regulations and do our best to, to make it all work. So I just wanted to say that. Um I, I did also wanted to, to echo what Paul, um, and I think Jeff said, which is I think it's premature. My understanding of the way a lip works is the first thing that happens is the town leadership, in our case, your board um approves uh the project. And then um, as has been stated, we go, it goes to DHCD, the state level, they approve, then it goes into the ZBA for a comprehensive permit. And the only thing I would say is that it's the summer. Um, a lot of people, this is sort of the first, they're getting a look at this as kind of a, a coherent project. And I think there are questions about, that have been raised before about any kind of large project on Coolidge Street, like what would prevent somebody else or another developer suing to hook up to the municipal systems? Do we have any sense of what the school impacts are gonna be? There's a, in other words, there's just a host of questions that I think could benefit from another information session or two that the public gets to ask questions about. Because once the select board signs off on it, that's really kicks the, kicks the whole permitting process for a lip forward. And I, and I do think it's premature to do it tonight. And I would just say it would be nice to have some more public input and some more chance for public to discuss it before we make decisions. It's a hundred and twenty units. It's a lot of units. What's that's gonna do to the town? We should have those answers.
Right. That, thank you, Neil. And I, and on that note, um, I think there, there's been a lot of discussion about this project for a number of years based on, you know, our affordable housing needs. And speaking of that, Addie May just um just, if you could speak next. So Addie May Weiss, if you'd like to be, if you'd like to speak, go ahead.
Hi, yes, I'm uh Addie May Weiss, speaking as Chair of the Housing Partnership. And um I, this has been going in discussions for a long time. And this, these plans that have been presented tonight have a lot of progress. And especially um, the fact that they've worked with the owner of eighty six Coolidge and been thoughtful about a butters. Um, there's a lot, in order to make this site better than the previous plans is really tremendous. And of course, having the sewer and water from the abutting towns has um a better impact on our town uh facilities. But I, as far as, I just wanted to correct misconception about um friendly forty B and lip. And there are two types of lips. There are um, there, there are local action uh, local initiative projects. And they kind of fall into two different categories. There's the kinds that are initiated essentially by a town. And those um do go into more details and usually the town's providing land and they're more engaged at the start. Or in this instance, the select board sending um, sending a letter and signing on to the application being submitted to the state also qual- qualifies it as a lip. And it, even though they're kind of, but it's different in that it's showing that there's support. It does not require that the select board is approving every single element of the design. The process essentially goes through ZBA and all the various boards as any other forty B project would with all the peer review um standards in place and the ability to um, you know, make cha- you know, make um conditions as fit as with any other forty B. It's simply a signaling to the state that the town is interested in working, is interested in this project. And I do think that town signaled that we are interested in this project back in December of twenty seventeen when we said, let's do a well-done project with the apartment unit and do one large one and get ourselves in position so that we are not constantly, constantly on defensive mode for forty Bs. So this is an important project. And I think we've been through a lot of different plans and what's being presented tonight had a lot of thought behind it.
Thank you, Addie. Um, the next person who would like to speak is Cindy Wolf or Dan Wolf? Somebody could
Yeah, hi, uh, this is Dan Wolf. Cindy Wolf's next to me. We live at Two Lake Street. And I know we're coming into this a little bit late, but what are the traffic plans uh as for Coolidge Street? I mean, already in the, uh, and I'm sure it's been discussed before, but I'd like to know, uh, during rush hour, Coolidge Street is already way backed up at, at North Main Street. And, you know, also in the other direction in the morning. So with all these additional how units coming into play, both the Pulte and this one, what's gonna happen with, with the Coolidge Street? Do they have to make it wider? I mean, getting more traffic lights? What's going on?
Good, thanks, Dan. Um, one thing that we've talked about in the past with this, one reason I know I've been in support of a project on Coolidge and other people have, is its proximity to Natick and the fact that the patterns of traffic are going out of town and not through the middle of town as opposed to another forty B that we've been talking about, which is right in the middle of town. So I think one advantage is that, that traffic will tend to go away from the center of town where this project is located. Um I don't know if Roy or Mark had another comment on traffic and, and what the plan was there.
Well, I will tell you from the previous traffic studies were done, you got that exactly correct. The majority of the traffic pulling out of our site would be taking a right rather than a left. And most likely going up to Spine Street, whether it's to Route nine, it's going to the Mass Pike or in that direction. So we can uh share those results if you don't already have those. What the traffic patterns are. The other thing is with apartment type communities, it's amazing how little traffic they generate at peak hour because there's a, there's a range of people living here, whether it's empty nesters, uh, people working from home or people leaving at various hours. So you don't get that big rush it from seven to nine or three to five type of thing. And we could share that information as well.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. Um, go ahead, Dan. Sorry.
So I, I've seen you guys have done the study. Uh, and you may be way ahead of me on this, but you know, there are people in Sherborne who do have to go to the Mass Pike and go down uh Coolidge Street to get, get to and from work and on the weekends, or even if you want to just, to your point, go to Roach Brothers. So I, you know, I, I, I think that there's gonna be a tremendous amount of traffic um on that road. And maybe long as I'm certainly not an expert, and there are a lot of bicycle traffic on that right now uh also, which is great. But has any thought been given to what, if, whatever, or if anything needs to be done? And is, as well going in the other direction by me on Lake Street um during, during rush hours or, or even though you said it's not gonna be that much of an issue? And then back up onto Washington Street where that's one of our worst intersections in town when it comes to having traffic accidents.
One, one other thing that was mentioned before, and somebody just let me know this. And I just want to point out that one suggestion by Baystone and that I know John Higley has pushed for was the fact that they're willing to put an MWR TA bus stop, which would encourage more public transportation in town that we don't have any of at this point. So that would help, hopefully help reduce the traffic as well.
Okay.
Um, Chuck Yan has a comment. I just want to recognize him. Michael, I know that you're up next after him, but I wanted to, somebody on, if somebody on the board has a comment, I'd like to recognize them. So Chuck?
I just wanted to echo um what Addie May was saying about two different types of lifts. The letter that was in our package makes it clear that this is not town initiated, not town land and reserves but what it literally states is that the uh, our endorsement begins in negotiating period with the developer to identify project mitigation of the benefits including infrastructure improvements and deeper affordability or more affordable units. Um, so it, 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 it's a start to the process, but I just, I just want to remind the other board members that in fact, the draft is in the package. So um, it, it makes it very clear that it is not being built on town land, but it's a developer initiated lift. So um it has those caveats about additional mitig- So it has those caveats about additional mitigation and infrastructure improvements to be discussed.
Okay, thanks Chuck. Michael Lesser.
Hi, can you hear me? Fine?
Yeah, go ahead.
Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. First, just as a resident, hopefully, there's a lot of information just that's clearly placed on the town website. Because I don't know if there's anything new. There seems to be a lot of stuff from the past. But it would be nice if, whatever this presentation is and any other project description stuff was clearly identified on the town website as the new stuff versus the old stuff that I saw. Then I'll put on a hat of the, of the Energy Committee. And I'll say that for both the developers, for both projects, as well as the select board, to consider in terms of when you put in support and what information, how you design the project, that the town is starting to look at sustainability and climate change issues. And there's Governor Baker's net zero by 2050, in terms of carbon and dealing with climate change issues, that, that the plan that you try to look at issues about whether you're going to make, put solar PV panels on all the buildings, whether you're going to use high-efficiency equipment, even for the AC and the, and the heating, whether you're going to go to the heat pumps, the kind of air source heat pumps, or even maybe a ground source that the, that the state is, Massachusetts is trying to promote, as well as water conservation. That there's a whole range of things that would, could make these buildings and any of these built houses, even on the other project, more sustainable with these kind of goals. And that I would like to think that you would start sort of showing your support for those kind of goals, given what everybody has to do in general, that you start doing that sooner. And then it's even, I would say, that part of our town support for the project is that includes the fact that the project tries to be a much more sustainably designed in terms of what it uses for energy and resources. And I have lots of ideas about it. And, but it's something that the town has to look at as a whole, and everybody in the state has to look at anyway. So you can comment on whether you're interested in doing those kind of things now. Or I would hope that you would come up with something about that before the town comes up with its support letter. Because it's an issue I'll bring up with the select board again, before they even issue a letter of support.
Roy, do you have anything on that?
I, I just wrote down some notes on everything you said. We will definitely look into all of that. You know, a lot of times you can do things that achieve the goals that you mentioned and actually have it financially feasible, which makes it very easy to do. And sometimes it can actually be enhanced by that. So we're not opposed to any of that. What we need to do is see from an economic point of view, what is feasible that we can do to make the project still viable. But we're very happy to look into all of that.
I'd be more than happy to talk to you another time.
Yeah.
About those kind of issues and just the broader things, suggesting water use and even how, even though your septic is going into another town, just issues that you could do about so that the facilities are cleaner in that sense as well. But more than happy to talk sometime.
Be happy to do that.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen. Marion Nutra, I can just read her comment, or if she wants to be unmuted and talk. She said, the select board previously discussed limiting the use of the Framingham Water Line to these projects. The letter to Framingham mentioning allowing the, of the line by abutters. We're going to talk about this, and this is something that we're going to negotiate in an IMA with Framingham. And I know the lines are actually going to be, what we've talked about so far is that any sewer lines or water lines are going to be privately owned by Pulte and Baystone. They're not going to be owned by any municipality. So I think that that alone will limit the ability for anybody to tap into it. And we're going to make sure that it's clear in our intermunicipal agreements that, that it's not going to be, that, that we're not going to allow that.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Marion?
Yes, it does. Thank you, George.
Okay.
George, can I have a quick follow-on? If you still hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Michael Lesser, 54 Forest. I guess I'd also, in terms of my last issue about the way the buildings are designed and their sustainability, it was nice to hear the developer, I don't know what Pulte is, would say about their buildings. But I guess I wouldn't mind putting it in front of the select board itself as to, as to people, as to your, the members there, interested in making sure that these kind of considerations are addressed by the developer. And that it's something that you yourselves feel is important to do. Or whether, to what extent, we should also talk ourselves separately about that, to see about to what extent it's something that, that you understand and are on board with.
Yeah, I think the select board obviously supports these sustainability issues as we've talked about in the past. And Roy, I would, I'm very encouraged to hear Roy say that he wants to meet with you and discuss those issues. So then before we do vote on it in July, we, that is something that we can hear has been addressed and, and is, you know, the developer is addressing adequately with the Energy Committee. We definitely will take your, what you say into account before we vote on it. The Neil Kessler asked a question about the, does the developer know, have an estimate of the number of school-age children you would estimate in a project this size?
I believe we do back at the office, but unfortunately, I did not bring that this evening. We can get that to you, though.
Okay, I know, because I know a lot of them are one and two bedrooms. And you mentioned that tends to be more of an empty nester that you tend to get. So, but I'd love to see, I think we'd love to see some estimates on that so we can get an idea of how many kids we think this would add to the school.
We can definitely get that, too.
Great, thanks, Roy. And then another question from Chris Winterfeld from the COA. Does project include all ADA requirements? I assume it has to as a new build.
Well, that question.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for the developers or questions in general for the select board? If not, I think, like I said, for the, for timing, we can, and I do appreciate what Michael said about, let's try to get something, I can work with Jeannie, and let's getting, getting an information website up on the town website so people can see this. I do have to disagree with Neil Kessler that this is not the first time people have seen this at the middle of the summer. Yeah, but we've been talking about it for, you know, two-plus years. And, and we talked about it at three previous meetings this year. So it's not the first people are seeing this. But I do, and I think it is an important project that the town, I've had a lot of people question it. The town does want this in general. And I think we do, it is important that we push forward. So when other projects that we clearly don't want, like the one on Hunting Lane that we wrote a vehement, we were vehemently opposed to and wrote a letter to the state to that effect, by, by supporting a project that we do, you know, that does make sense, we can get ahead of it. And I think that's an important position that the town needs to be in.
Well, thank you. And by the way, if you need a technical help in any way to put some of these images on your website, please let us know.
Okay, yeah, we'll be in touch. It might be David or Jeannie, somebody from the select board office will be in touch with either you or Todd. And you guys can communicate with them on what we need.
George, we post everything that comes in within a day or two. Some of them have dates on them. We got to make sure that all of them have dates on them.
We need to clean up all the old stuff. There's stuff that's, that's no longer needed, that's sitting there.
I'll make a list of what, when you find it and send it to me.
Okay.
Chuck, did you have something? I think you were trying to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted, the, the offer of a walkthrough, I think would be terrific. So Mr. McDowell would love to see it staked out and have a chance to, those of us that have trouble visualizing it other than in person, that would be, that'd be a terrific opportunity.
I think we can do that right after the Fourth of July holiday.
Right. Great, thanks, Roy. I just got another question from, from Carol. It says, David, where are the documents posted?
They're posted on the website. When you go to the main page, when you open it up, there's a special button where it lists different sections. And it says land development. You go to land development and it'll give you a page of all the projects.
Okay, we might want to, just because this is on the front burner, we might want to put a link right on the front page so people can find it easily, David. And then I got another question from Peggy's iPad, says, going back to limitations on sewer hookups, limiting to these developments is important. The lines are owned by the developers, would it allow for a large development on the Sweet Meadow Farm property in the future if it was done by the same developer? I don't think it would, because we're going to have an intermunicipal agreement that's signed and the town would have to agree to that.
George, what I would envision is intermunicipal agreement would require town approval for any extensions and hookups beyond this project. But there's actually, one of the issues is what if there are town, what if there are wells at abutters that have a problem? We may want to hook them in, but we want the town to be able to control it. So it's, the IMA, the intermunicipal agreement, is going to be the vehicle for establishing the parameters for those hookups.
Exactly, and especially on that side of town, Chuck. That's a good point, that if that water line is there, this could actually be an emergency savior for some people on that side of town, if, if we have this in the agreement because of the general chemical plume that's in that area. If, for whatever reason, there was an emergency needed for water, that if the water line's already there, it could, could actually be a godsend.
Hey, George, this is Mark. Can I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, so I agree with everything that you and Chuck have been saying. That's, that is very consistent and aligned with all of my conversations that I've had with Framingham. What, so let's see, I lost my train of thought there. Oh, yeah, so I just wanted to add, sorry about that. So I just wanted to add that the modeling that we've been doing does allow for the abutters to tie in. So we have not committed to tie in. We're aligned with, with what you've been saying, with Chuck, with Chuck's been saying. But the engineering model that, that we've been discussing with Framingham does, does allot some water usage in there so that if there's a public safety issue in the future, you know, regarding the, the general chemical, you know, plume, that, that would allow the town of Sherburne to be able to do something in the future.
Okay, great, thanks, Mark. I have another question from Chris Winterfeld. Will the walkthrough be made public? Or would it just be for Board, Roy, how does that, you know, or Todd?
Well, we're willing to do both or either. It's, we're happy to meet whoever. Obviously, we probably want to limit the number of people at any one time, given. But we're happy to work with the town on that. Yeah, I just want to address a couple of things. Roy mentioned the traffic report. The one we actually have is old because, previously done back a few years ago, because we haven't really been able to do traffic counts with everything given going on right now. The traffic patterns are very different. So I'm not quite sure what the best process to address that is at the moment, because traffic isn't at its normal levels or, you know, it's a little bit different right now. So we can work on something for that.
Yeah, I bet you probably a two-year-old traffic study is probably more relevant for the future than one that was done in the last six, last three months, so.
Probably.
If anything, you would overstate it.
Right. Do I have any other questions? If not, thank you, Roy, Todd, Mark, everyone from your teams for coming and giving us an update on this and looking forward to continuing to talk this through. So hopefully, we can make progress between now and a month from now.
Thank you very much. We'll keep in touch with all the folks that we've mentioned earlier that we'll be talking to.
Yeah, definitely. And you can connect with Michael, you, I think you have Michael Lesser's information so you can connect on the energy issue. And I know, and I know you're in touch with the Conservation Commission, so thank you.
You will be in touch with Addie May West as well.
Addie May West, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
All right, so I'm going to turn it back over to Eric.
Thank you, George, thank you. Well done there. Okay, that's it. I'd like to move on to Agenda Item Number Five. That's basically five in a five A. It's a two consideration, our consideration of two appointments, the Sherman Police Department and a consideration appointment to the Open Space and Energy Committee. Police Department first, looks like we have two Nickolas's. That'd be Nikolai. And, you know, I've read the background, Nicholas DeSaya, and please interrupt if I'm pronouncing incorrectly, and Nicholas DeSantis. Both have impressive backgrounds here. I'd like to hear from Lieutenant Bento on his opinion of these two candidates. Unless there's anyone to say anything on the select board first.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, if we could hear from Lieutenant Bento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, first Nicholas DeSaya. Nick, did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nicholas, we're looking for an appointment, and that's to replace a vacancy that was created when Officer Hale left for the Westboro Police Department. So we conducted interviews. We had a very large pool of applicants this time around, over 30 applications. We had two rounds of oral board interviews, and Nicholas came out on top. And he's a very strong candidate. He graduated high school in Connecticut and then went on to earn his Bachelor's in Criminal Justice with two minors in forensic psychology and sociology from Franklin Pierce University. He then attended the Municipal Police Training Committee Basic Recruit Academy. And during his college time, worked down in Nantucket as a summer officer. And Nantucket took him on as a full-time officer, which is where he's currently employed. He went through a thorough background check, including medical, psychological exam, and had very positive reviews. And again, as I said, he, he came out on top on the process. And I would respectfully request the, the board appoint Nicholas DeSaya as a full-time Sherman police officer.
That seems very impressive. I don't know if I want to consider them both, or I guess, how would we do this? We take one at a time?
I would probably do one at a time.
Okay. Okay, is there any questions or any additional discussion about Mr. DeSaya?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I don't know where Plainfield, Connecticut is. Are you a Jets fan or are you a Pats fan? And there's a correct answer here.
Patriots.
That's the right answer.
Say team a bag.
Mr., you're more interested if you're a Huskies fan or not, though.
It was very impressive. He's been through the academy. He has experience. I think, it sounds like we're very lucky to have this applicant. Is there a motion on the board?
I would move to, I would move to appoint Nicholas DeSaya as a full-time Sherman police officer.
Second.
Okay, I'm just going to go anywhere that I see it here. Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Yes.
George?
Hi.
And Chuck?
And IMA as well.
Thank you very much for the application, Nicholas, and.
Welcome to Sherburne.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you.
And Lieutenant, if you'd like to say anything about Mr. DeSantis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nicholas DeSantis also went through the same process. Again, did very well. Nicholas is from the Milford, Mass area. Went to high school in Milford and attended the University of Rhode Island his freshman year of college, then transferred to Worcester State University, where he earned a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice with a minor in sociology. This, the DeSantis joined the Milford, Mass Auxiliary Police in 2018. And he recently attended the MBTA Transit Academy as a self-sponsor, graduated in April. He also went through extensive backgrounds, had very positive reviews, also went through the medical, psychological, and again, a very strong candidate. So I would respectfully request the select board appoint Nicholas DeSantis as a full-time Sherman police officer.
Thank you, David. Just a question for myself. The MBTA Academy, that's a, he doesn't have to have any different training? That's, that's adequate for municipal police as well?
That's correct. The, the MBTA is a certified academy through the MPTC. And when they have openings in their academy for offices that are not being employed by the MBTA, they open up to municipalities. It's, it's actually a very difficult academy to get people into. So, and it's, it's a, it's a very, very strong academy, has a very good reputation. So we're happy to hear that he made it in there. And, you know, we, we far too often are losing good candidates to other communities. So for once, I feel really happy that we're taking two away from other communities and saving the town a lot of money in training, so.
And to clarify, I was not questioning the credentials academy. I just didn't know if it was different, you know what I mean? If it was just.
It did cover all the, all of the required curriculum that the MPTC has.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nick DeSantis as a full-time Sherman police officer.
Second.
Question, do we need to have the start date, the effective July one, twenty twenty?
Yes, effective July one, twenty twenty.
Okay, yeah, add that to my motion, thanks Chuck.
So that does go to my question, if I could ask still a question, Vice Chair.
Yes, of course.
Is it because of July one, so is this one of the expanded positions? And is it complicated by the fact that town meeting is happening after July one? Might be more a question for David.
It's, um, yeah, it's something, uh, that I talked to advisory and it's really a money issue with Sharon. But it's just, it'll be, the funds will still come out of the current fiscal year if they start on July first. I know that's not much of an answer, but yeah, it would be a lot better and a lot smoother if it was, if we had the appropriation already approved at town meeting. But the position already exists to hire into and there's a need for the summer. So at the same time, the police department budget has been reduced to, to cover a certain amount of overtime. Without putting the officers in to reduce that overtime, you'd have to add the money back in to the budget when you do the appropriation.
So I, I voted for the expansion and I'm glad actually that Lieutenant in the force is jumping on the sooner rather than later, no question about that. But there is a slight risk if, if the town does not support that expanded budget, I'm assuming.
There, there would be plenty of funding in the budget, uh, to continue funding the position. We would have, uh, turnover at some point. You know, and a position might be held open because this one was, um, brought in earlier. But, um, the funds would be there, um, if it was to be reduced, um, more to reduce the, uh, position. But, um, we would, we would have an obligation to continue with the position for, with the police department funding that is in place.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I just want to get, I just want to get out there if there was a risk or not and what have you. But if that can stay despite the town meeting vote, which I'm confident will be passed, I think there was a fair momentum behind that. And I supported it as well, and this, uh, this board supported it. All right, we have motion and a second on the floor.
We seconded it, yes.
Okay, so, um.
And Eric?
Oh, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say if, um, it, it's not as easy as just reducing the budget, uh, that would affect the position. That's, that's basically what I was saying.
Okay, Jeff, how do you vote?
Hi.
Uh, Paul, how do you vote?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Chuck, you're on mute.
Chuck, you're on mute.
Uh, I.
And I am I as well, congratulations on Nicholas.
Thank you very much, guys.
Good to see you, okay.
Thanks Nick and Nick, you guys got radio problems, I think, Nick one, Nick two, how do you do?
I noticed.
Figure it out.
By Nicholas and one goes by Nick, I noticed on their Zoom. So I'm guessing that's gonna, how it's gonna go.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, next on was, uh, a, um, an appointment to the Open Space and Energy Committee. Appointment of, um, sorry, I had it right here.
Tom Trainer.
Tom Trainer.
Tom Trainer, of course.
I'd move the appointment, he's a long-term volunteer of the town, served on a lot of town boards and committees. Certainly would be a welcome addition to this.
Is there any discussion and are, does, um, is Mike Lesser still on, does he want to say anything? I mean, uh.
Yes, hold on.
Did you already make a motion, Paul?
You have to unmute me, hey guys, unmute me. Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Oh, you, oh, sorry, you, I want to make sure you get it, whoops, you still there? Uh, can you hear me still? I. I think it's just to the Sherborne Energy Committee, I think you're, you have a correct, he's on the open space. But he's applying to the Sherborne Energy Committee, that's the appointment. It's not a, just to get the committee right in your motion and what you're trying to do.
No, that, that's correct, that's correct, Michael, he is being appointed to the Energy Committee. But he also wa, needed to be reappointed to the Open Space.
Well, I think you want to just make it clear that it's two different committees, that I would.
Right, exactly.
Somehow either add committees or you just somehow make it two separate motions, I don't care how you do it. But just be clear that, that this is an issue of appointment to two separate committees.
Very, point taken.
Since I made the motion, could I clarify the motion to say to appoint him to the Energy Committee? And to reappoint him to the Open Space Committee?
Second.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Okay, Paul, how do you vote?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Chuck?
Always happy to appoint the biotech exec to a town committee, aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Um, I'll vote aye as well, and, uh, congratulations, I see he's well-educated as well.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, it's a, it's a consideration of acquisition of Five Washington Street. It's been discussed before the board, there was a revised background material, um, a cost estimate and assessment by, um, onsite advisory. Before we, um, go into detail, is there any general discussion amongst the board on what you've seen in the background material?
Just some questions.
I have some questions as well, just as a quick summary, if I'm reading this correctly, and I'll be the first to say that it, I'm not fully understanding all of it, but it does look like there's some base, um, information. They're recommending that it looks like there's around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of capital, um, estimated capital improvements for year one. Around twenty thousand dollars on year three and around a thousand dollars on year four. Uh, looking through it and talking with before the meeting with David, it doesn't look like they really tackled the public water supply issue in this. Which I think, uh, Darryl Beardsley spoke at the last meeting, which made me, um, a little concerned about it. And, um, at least those are my main reservations, if anyone wants to discuss anything else, please do.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
I'm sure there's many more questions, but let me, before, I can probably answer several. What, what this represents is strictly the bare minimum, um, things that we could consider and, and, and put some numbers at. So for instance, the, we did, so I had discussions with, um, our trusted partner at Whitewater, um, Russ Tierney. And just off the cuff, he's, you know, he stated that the bare minimum, if that well were even good, the bottom line, you have to do a quantity quality test, probably a forty-eight hour test to get DEP to buy it. It would be ten thousand dollars just to get the paperwork to DEP. So we just put that in as a placeholder, that, that would represent zero work other than just the testing and the engineering time, uh, for Whitewater. We really couldn't represent anything more because it would be hypothetical. So that, that's all that.
When do I get my PowerPoint up here?
Mr. Chair, can I talk?
We also, before anyone else jumps on numbers.
And we got unmuted.
Frank, we need to mute Frank because there's a background noise, I can't, there you go.
Yeah, recognizing a second, George, if, uh, Sean, is there anything else before, uh, George speaks?
Yeah, uh, we also did not account for any ADA upgrades in the second story. In other words, there's no elevator. So the second story is not ADA compliant and it's a bare minimum. Initially, they wanted to just throw in a, a cost for, for engineering and architectural assessment. Uh, but we wanted to target something because clearly we, the town couldn't even move into the building the way it is. The kitchenette and the bathroom don't, aren't compliant. Nor is the, uh, the side entry that they show. So we had to throw some things in there, but it's an, it's an old building. So you can't just pull numbers out of the sky and say, this is generally what it does. But, so that's what we did, but they're, they're very low assessments here.
Okay, and I get, and I need someplace to start. The one thing I want to say to the board before we discuss actually, is I, I encourage the board to remain as factual as possible. And not provide opinions or indicate whether you support or not, because there is an executive session item on this. And the whole purpose of executive session is essentially you don't show your hand and actually, you know, so, to the actual seller. And indicate like how bad you want something or don't want something to help the negotiation. So I'd like, ask the board to stay as factual in these questions as possible, uh, George, please.
One thing I just wanted to discuss was, I think, and I know Jeff has mentioned this in the past as well, um, I think we need to be exploring options in town. I think we have, we've talked about a potential of building a new center on the caustic lot. We've talked about potentially using the community center, the bottom floor of the library. I think there's a lot of options here and, and I just want to, I wanted to throw it out there that there's more options. This isn't the only option for a senior center.
Well, that brings up a good question, so it's my understanding that, um, our, our state rep has successfully extended the, uh, was a hundred thousand dollar earmark we had for this, um, I'm gonna ask David, have we successfully extended that for a year that we could utilize this?
Yeah, it's been around for twelve years, so it's been extended one year and Paul probably has more information on that.
It's not extended yet, it passed the House but not the Senate.
Okay.
But with one clarification, it's not a grant, it's a bond authorization, it's, it's borrowing, it's not a grant, I believe.
And, and with, and was speaking to David Linsky a few weeks ago, I think, but look.
Sorry, George, you're breaking up.
Would be something he would, oh, sorry, I said, when I spoke to David Linsky a few weeks ago, um, he mentioned that, I think he would be probably more in support of building a senior center or something like that, that we could potentially get even more, more funds for something like that than, than have been earmarked as a bond in the past, as Jeff mentioned.
He also mentioned multi-town, looking at multi-town.
Cause one of my questions, I thought, I thought the hundred thousand dollars was a grant. My question might be a bit moot if it's a bond, because I don't think we have trouble finding authorizations, um, or whatever. Can it be used to actually do a design or a study or something for the caustic property? Can it, um, can be used to advance that project?
From, I, I need to check on that, Eric, to verify it, but I believe it just says for a senior center. Paul, do you remember the original language?
Yeah, it includes design work, it does include design.
Yeah, and that's huge, and, um, but I do want to look at it, if it's just authorization of bond, there must be something else to it. Uh, because you know, it's not difficult to get authorization of bonds, so I, it'd be interesting to look at the language, I've not looked at the language.
It's an earmark on the state's bond bill.
Okay.
Eric?
Uh, yes, Chuck.
Could we get Frank Jenkins' view, we asked him to volunteer and get involved with this. I would love to hear his view on, I, I think Sean answered, I had two questions. One was, is there an estimate of ADA compliance numbers? As I understand it, there's not, at least for the second floor. But I would love to hear Frank Jenkins' view on, of this specific property, because that's one of the things we asked him to help us with.
Sure, can we unmute Frank? Hi Frank.
Well, uh, yes, I do have a report to, uh, uh, report back to you. I think four weeks ago, we, uh, met and then discussed this initially. And, uh, I do have a report to share with you, it's not complete. It does not have, uh, all the details of the ADA compliance and the costs associated with it and so forth. But it, it is a report that gives you a, a, a complete, uh, understanding of what the property is, how old it is. What various issues that we might be facing if we do acquire it for the use of the COA and for public buildings. And I'd like to share that with you now, if that, uh, if it makes sense, take about ten minutes. I don't know whether you have that time or.
Do we want to do this in executive session?
We need, I was gonna say, do we need to go through a full report?
How does the board feel?
This sounds more like an executive session issue.
Take if it tips our hand on that, uh, Frank, do you mind waiting around till executive session?
What time in the morning will you be meeting an executive?
I hope not.
Three o'clock.
Well, then I'll stay up till three, okay.
Three o'clock in, uh, Paris time.
Yes.
Uh, looking at our agenda, there might be some more discussion, we'll see how, um, seven and eight go, how much discussion is there? Hopefully, um, it won't be more than frankly, half an hour, won't be, um, after nine.
So I, I had two questions.
Yes, Paul.
The, the first, the first was that, as I understand it, we don't, we're not required to make the second floor handicap accessible. We can get a waiver as long as we put a restriction that it won't be used for public. And secondly, with regard to the well, is I understand that, that we can get our well to be used as a public water supply, notwithstanding its location because of its grandfathered status. But passing those two issues, my question would be for Sean Colleen, is that, doesn't the town have a public water supply? That feeds the Sherburne Community Center and how far away is that? And how much would it cost to run a pipe from the Sherburne Community Center's well to this building?
So, there's a couple answers in it, um, the well for Town Hall does feed to the community center. And as some of us are aware, the community center property is completely surrounded by the Unitarian Church. So at the very least, uh, we would have to get an easement or right of use to run that pipe through the Unitarian's property. If we were going to tap it off of that, uh, that line that's in the community center, so it is possible. The problem is, we still don't have, that would trigger another level of testing that we never did on the well at Town Hall. And the risk there is we could, we could then prove Town Hall's no good.
Which is also related to the fact that the well, the well on the caustic property has been tested. Effective.
I didn't hear you, Jeff.
Renee Montella is unmuted and it's, I'm sensing interference from her.
I just said, the, uh, I think Nancy Hess is on, can speak to this because she was on the committee. The well on the caustic property was tested and rather than abandoned, it was sealed appropriately. Um, and is a, a, a very good source of water. Do you have, elaborate Nancy?
Hold on, that's, that, that was all prior to the work we did with DEP. The well on the caustic property is not going to help us anyway, it's, it's a thousand feet away from that building.
No, I didn't mean to go to, yeah, I didn't mean to go to the, um, this location.
Right, uh, oh, I understand what you're saying, but, so either way, it's like, there's a can of worms that has to be opened to find out how to get a public water supply to the building at Five Washington Street. It's either the well that's two feet from the foundation. If, if that were to fail, which it may very well not be good, then the other option would be try to use Town Hall's well. But you gotta keep adding zeros, it's certainly not ten thousand dollars to get a line from Town Hall all the way to Five Washington Street. And the permitting alone would be in excess of that anyway. So again, I represented the absolute bare minimum with the ten thousand dollar reserve that we put in year one. And that, and that would have to be done, ultimately, some of that would have to be done before we'd even sign a PS.
Did the cost include the retaining wall, Sean?
She, there is some money in there.
That, that was a.
And I'll say just about, we definitely need to get kind of a better educated idea of what's needed in the well. Like, I'm not sure it's grandfathered, it's converted from an individual to a public water supply. Public water supplies wells do have grandfathering, but you have to have a registration number for them. And I just know enough to be dangerous and I almost work in that business. I'd want to see just kind of a, um, uh, kind of a thought out opinion on that. And I think the rest of that, I would like to talk about in executive session.
I think Daryl said that it could not be.
That's correct, and she unfortunately was called out of town today, so, um, she couldn't be here tonight.
She did.
That's correct.
But also, it was an opinion she gave on the spot, and I just want to see a, I want to talk about an executive session, I don't think we have a black. I want to talk about an executive session. I don't think we have a black and white answer on that.
Right.
I believe that's true. We just need to be validated one way or the other.
So I can add to this, that that when the the Walgreens building was going in, I had a number of meetings with DEP. And introduced the concept of grandfathering all the wells in the business district because of Sherburne's unique situation. And we went back and forth. We argued. There's a lot of people who said it couldn't be done. But at the end of the day, DEP bought into the argument that we made. Which was that they were gonna allow the existing wells that were already in place to service. What expansion we wanted to do in the business district.
I'm not sure that's analogous, Paul, because this is a private well being converted to a public well. I think those were public wells. That no longer met the current, at that time, requirements for public wells. So they grandfathered them, but.
That's my understanding, because that one from Klein's garage.
Version of a private to a public well for the Walgreens.
Yeah, but it converted from a use of less than 25 people to a use of more than 25 people.
Right. But when you go to a public water supply with the new regulations. We need to validate it. I'm not sure you can just convert a private well.
I have a quick answer to Paul's second question.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Without opinion of whether or not we should, the. We did confirm. That it is still allowed to not make the second floor ADA accessible. You have to guarantee accommodations, though. In other words, you couldn't make that the only kitchen. Any, any. Permanent position you would have working in that building would have to have that accommodation to be back on the first floor should they need it. Because obviously, there's anti-discrimination. So you could use it. I don't. It would be difficult. So we didn't, that's why we didn't put that money in there. It also would include an elevator, so it's pretty hard to just pull that number out of thin air on an antique building.
All right. Is there any other more factual questions before we discuss this more opinionated?
Nancy Hess has her hand up.
I'm still getting used to this. Some people do the virtual hands, some people put.
I'll try to keep track of that for you, Eric. Chris Winterfeld also has her hand up, so.
I'll start with Nancy.
I just want to caution us to get, take in considerations, lessons learned by prior projects and having been. Part of the caustic acquisition and then the reuse, chairman of the reuse committee. Taking an old building and converting it to a, well, for one thing, if it's not a municipal you used to begin with. It triggers a whole bunch of things. And with an old building, there's a surprise at every corner. And trying to configure a building that isn't built for certain purposes is sometimes very difficult. One of the reasons we decided to recommend taking the building down and leaving the property for better use. Was because of the expense that would be incurred trying to make that a municipal building and to fit. A use. And one of the suggestions at the time was to take that property, well, they suggested we. Library over there, library going elsewhere. It suggested to have senior housing over there. And we have a lot of senior housing that's now in the plan. And the other thing was for a senior center. So I, I think I'd like to encourage you to consider exploring more, putting an appropriate building in place for a senior center than trying to reconfigure. A very tight set, which was a problem with the police station building project and a very dangerous. Egress and access point where that is. And and an old building that, as I say, every turn gives you a new surprise when you're trying to convert it to something else. So I am very much in favor. I think it's it's time to do something with the seniors have supported so many things in town. To address that need, but I would encourage you to look for something that would be a better fit. And be a, not an ongoing maintenance thing like converting an old building is. But something that's designed specifically for that need.
Thank you.
That's just my two cents. But we learned a lot. We learned a lot through the caustic project. So I I hope we can benefit from that experience before we undertake another old building.
Thank you, Nancy. And next was Christina Winterfeld. I have trouble seeing.
Okay, and I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. I I tend to agree with Nancy that this is a big project. I just, just to cover all our bases before we move forward. I didn't get the price on the ADA upgrades for Five Washington. And is it a municipal building if it's if it's coded as a commercial building? Does anyone have an answer on that?
Maybe Sean can help out with the answer on the cost of the ADA, because even I'm bouncing around looking at a report there. And then I don't fully understand your second question, but is Sean?
It's, it's, it's now a commercial building. So we're talking about, I'm a little, you know, vague on commercial versus municipal building. So, you know, that seems to be a little bone of contention here. So I don't know. If it's commercial, is it still considered municipal?
Is open to the public. It's, it would be a public building. So it would, it would. It would have to comply with the public standards, not, not a commercial.
I mean, it's commercial now. That's what I'm wondering about the sewer and the septic.
So public buildings, public buildings are open to the public, just like David indicated, and have to have ADA, public water supplies, what have you, if they go above 25 people. Where it's commercial or municipal, that's just about the ownership. I don't, you know, unless there's special provisions and certain like, you know, like, you know, state laws. There really is no effective difference between commercial that's open to the public and municipal that's open to the public. It's about its use and it's about its ownership. But it's almost, there are, there are specifics within that, depending on what type of commercial, type of municipal, and I could go on endlessly, but I don't.
Okay.
You know, I think it's, it's difficult to answer that question. You have to look up what it is. What you're looking at is, right now, it's a commercial office building. We're converting to a municipal senior center. And at those specifics, there are things that would need to change in it.
Okay. And so as far as Whitewater goes, that's a septic company, septic system company, I believe, right? Correct? And they are giving an approximate. No.
They do public water supplies. They, they, they operate all of our public water supplies.
They sometimes operate wastewater treatment plants.
Well, I thought they did. Yeah, that's what I thought. They, they did septic.
But not that. That's the difference between septic and a wastewater treatment plant. I believe they have operators that actually will operate a wastewater treatment plant. That's just a point of information not applicable to this project at all.
All right. Okay, sorry, David. I didn't know that.
I think Marion, oh, I'm sorry, Christina.
Yeah. So as far as the ADA upgrades, we didn't get a price on that. Just, just to, just to flush this all out. Before we, I think probably I would like to, if I get the support of the select board, as I'm representing the council on aging. We would love to do new construction on the caustic property. And but I just want to clear up, and I think Paul did clear this up. We don't have a complete picture on the $100,000 earmark. That is just past step one. We have to go through the Senate and then it has to be signed by Governor Baker. So but hopefully that, and you know, in the, in this, in this worldwide epidemic of COVID, that might, you know, there's a lot of other things they have on their plate. So just fingers crossed that will happen. So would love to get, if this does not happen, it doesn't look like it might. Although we don't have all the figures in, can we get some kind of a, a thumbs up from the select board on going forward with the senior center? Positive vote on some kind of a construction on a, I mean, caustic property seems to be. We got that, we got thumbs up from the advisory board on that. And George, George gave us a positive when he came to see that.
Chris, what I, what I said earlier in this meeting was, I'd like to explore all the options.
Oh, as would we, yeah.
Not, not just new construction. I wanna look at, like I said, can we look at the community center? Can we look at the library? You know, I think there's a lot of options. I don't think we need to rush into anything. I think we, we should explore all options.
George, excuse me for inter, I totally agree. We haven't gotten the actual feedback, full feedback on this. But as I understand it, the local society is already going into the library in that space.
No, nothing's been determined yet.
I, can I?
Yeah, Chuck.
I'm sorry.
I don't, we've not taken a formal vote, but I've only heard support for the town exploring and constructing a senior center. The devil's in the details and each project spans, you know, has different pluses and 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 minuses and each has a different cost structure. But I don't think it requires a formal vote. Every member of this board has been expressed their opinion that they're fully supportive of a, of a senior center. The question is, where's the best place to do it? In our last meeting, we asked authorized exploration of whether or not Five Washington Street made sense. And that's what we have. We have the onsite report. We're gonna hear from Frank Jenkins. So I don't, I don't think it requires a formal vote by all five members. All five members expressed support for it.
And I just wanna add that I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves. I wanna discuss Five Washington Street in executive session. And and get kind of a better opinion of where we stand at that point there. And then, and then we can talk about the caustic property.
That sounds fair, Eric.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Marion Neutra, who's had her hand up for a while.
Uh, yeah, just one little additional point beyond the fact that I think we all support. The possibility of a senior center. The question is where and how. What's been, or there's been a lot of discussion of the cost of this and that on Five Washington. I think we're getting into more detail than we need to at this point. Because we haven't yet, for example, heard from the COA or from others in the town of what would have to be included? What are the absolute necessary things to have included in the senior center? For example, the, it, the Five Washington Street, for example, could not serve meals, couldn't have big meetings. There are functions that need to be served. And I think it would be good to have a clear picture of exactly what those functions are. How many office spaces do you really need? What kind of meeting space do you need? What kind of food service do you need to be able to do? And that'll help kind of, you know. Guide us through the overview of where to put a senior center.
That's a very good point, Marion. Before we, I don't wanna go too much down that, down that, down that avenue. But does anyone know, has there actually been a needs assessment for a senior center in town? Anyone more of a history than than me? Okay, just more.
I mean.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So we, I've been on the board for about 10 years. We have done a lot of research going to other senior centers. And, you know, over the years, the board members have changed. And we, we have drawn up what we need. I mean, now it's changed so much because of all the ADA requirements. We could, we could easily draw up, draw back on our needs. And draw up things that we need ADA. We have somebody now on the board who's on the disability committee. And next, next, well, two meetings, two, two select board meetings from now, I can give you everything that you need.
Okay, no, I think that'd be, that'd be very helpful, especially look at options based on our, again, our executive session. Yes, Paul?
I just want to remind you that we're, we're struggling to get the. General Court to extend the hundred thousand for one year. That means it will expire June 30, 2021.
Yep.
We're already in June now of 2020, so we have one year to spend this money. If we're going to make use of the state money, and my philosophy is whenever the state wants to give you money, take the money and use it. I think we should use that money.
Is it an authorization to borrow? Is it money we have to pay back or is it a grant?
It's a, it's money we don't have to pay back.
Okay.
I do not.
It's an author.
I don't think that's right, Chris. I don't think that's right.
It is.
I can explain that if you want me to.
Yeah, Paul, please.
Yeah, Paul, please.
All right. So it's called, what's, what it is, is called an earmark. It's $100,000 that would be paid to the town of Sherburne free and clear. But in order to fund that. It's in a bond bill that the state has to borrow. The bond bill that it's part of is very substantial, millions and millions and millions of dollars, of which this is one line item in that bond bill. The state's gonna borrow that money. It will have the obligation to pay it back. It will be in the state. Of treasury, once the bond proceeds are received. But the grant to us is free and clear. We don't have to pay it back.
Yeah, so I actually have been involved with things like that, similar to my day job. And what they do, they actually kind of scramble to find a granting mechanism somewhere in the state. That can actually use to fund it. So they have $100,000 that's put aside and they do it. So I suspect it actually probably does not have to be paid back. But I have not read the language. George, if you know anything else, I have to talk with now or an executive.
I just wanna, oh, sorry. I just wanna add that I talked directly with David Linsky and I don't think, as Paul says, if we don't spend it in a year, it's gonna be gone. I don't think that's true, just based on my conversation with David Linsky. He's in support of a senior center in our town, if it makes sense. It doesn't mean after a year, he's not gonna support. He may support even more than that down the road. I just, I, I.
You'd have to do it.
Chris, I had a conversation with him. You're shaking your head no. This is what David Linsky told me.
Okay.
I'm just telling you what my conversation was with him.
I wanna rein in the conversation about the bond bill, because I do wanna handle more of this opinionated aspect in an executive. I really would. I don't think we're advancing this specifics about the improvements on Five Washington Street any further with this here. I think I, is there any more discussion about the factual aspects? Are any questions about the improvements necessary to Five Washington Street? Okay. So with that, and I appreciate if Frank Jenkins can join us in executive, we'll try to keep. We also have counsel coming for the, the previous item. We'll try to keep that brief and we'll tie into that. Anything else? I'd like to move on to agenda item number seven. It's a COVID-19 update. It says Darryl Beardsley on the, on the agenda. But it's my understanding that she's not available. Jeff, do you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna give the update, because she's, she was called out of state, actually, and Zach is fighting fires on Mason Hill. So they both asked me to, and I'll just do it really fast, because I think people know most of it. We did open Farm Pond a week ago. I don't know if Jeannie's on or not, but she could probably give us an update. I've spoken to the lifeguards twice or the. Rangers, they call them at the gate, and they seem to say it had been going pretty well. I know we did make a change. Originally, we divided the day into, there she is. We divided the day into three time slots and I think we've got four time slots now. Jeannie, you wanna fix everything I'm misstating?
Um, we, we talked to a lot of residents and they felt that the three hour slots were too long.
Yeah.
So we're switching over to two hour slots, which will give us four sessions for signups a day. With the last one being 4:30 to 7:00, so they have an extra half hour. One of the issues we're finding is that people are making reservations and not showing up.
Right.
So we're trying to kind of get that into control. I put something on the website today about it and asking people to either email myself or Sherburne Rec. Christine McGalant, who has been, by the way, an enormous help with this. And they can tell us ahead of time that they're not coming, then we can throw that back out or at least tell the guards. You know, at the gate that that isn't gonna be used. If somebody drives down and they happen to wanna go and they couldn't get a reservation. We can tell them that block seven, whatever, is available. So that's what we're trying to do now.
So my son's tennis program in Worcester, if you no show, they, then you can't reserve a court for a week. They give you a penalty if you no show without notifying. They give you a penalty if you no show without notifying.
Both are, Jeff.
No, no, I'm just telling you, just, just, just aside.
I know, I know. I think that if we find that there are people doing it, like the same people are doing it.
Yeah.
We will.
Right.
Pull that in a little.
Yeah. Couple other points on coronavirus. As you probably read, uh, Massachusetts has, there's a site called RT.live. It's measuring the rate of, um, infection. And Massachusetts has the high, lowest rate in the country right now. Where zero point six seven means that every positive COVID patient infects zero point six seven other people. And the target is to be below one. So we're not in exponential growth. So that's a, that's a huge, uh, um, coup due to our testing. But I think it's actually, Marion can speak to this way better than I can, but, um, due to our, uh, very strong contract, contact tracing also. And, um, you probably have read in the news that a number of states, I think it's New York and New Jersey and Connecticut are, are issuing a blocking of residents. That, uh, you know, 14 day quarantine period for any resident coming from Texas or Florida. We already have, since March, I believe, um, had, had a requirement that anyone coming from another state would, and, and other countries would self quarantine for 14 days. So we've still had that. Obviously you can't enforce it very well. Then the, uh, quickly, the second, uh, the last item I have is the state just issued, actually it was late Tuesday night, but it was in the Globe today. They require the guidelines for schools, because they're trying to balance with schools, um, both health and safety, but they have to figure out a way to get the kids back at school. And particularly in some of the crowded parts of Boston and other towns, um, you know, where they may have 35 kids in a classroom in a normal year. So they're trying to figure out a way to balance the school needs with the public health needs. So, um, we have a separate, from the coronavirus team, we have a special subcommittee. This is a joint committee of Dover and Sherburne, includes Matt Vitale from our Board of Health, working with Dr. Kio and Jill Fador, the school nurse at the, uh, she's the nurse at Pine Hill, but also for the school system. So they're meeting again tomorrow to go through the state's just issued guidelines on, on how to reopen schools. And it includes things like, um, they're not recommending temperature checks. They're recommending that each student will bring their own lunch and they'll be eating the lunch in the classroom, not in the cafeteria anywhere. They are, one unusual thing which was new, and I don't think they fleshed out, is they're considering, but haven't determined yet, making the social distancing for school students to be, um, three feet, not six feet. And I think this goes back to what I said earlier, is they're trying to figure out if they could get enough kids in a classroom and not have to have double teachers. So there, there's things that will probably have to be worked out. But that, we have a separate team working just with the schools and it's a joint Dover Sherburne team. I'm looking at those issues. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Is there any, um, indication, I think we're moving to, was it phase three? Is that, when is that? July 9th? And when are we moving to phase, the state?
It's July. I forget which state in July. It's, it's at least a couple of weeks away, I think, because we're the latter half of phase two right now, but.
Yeah, phase 2.2 or something like that.
Yeah.
Is there, uh, any indication of how we'll adjust that? Or I think we'll just kind of go along with, with the state requirements for phase three?
I'm not sure. I mean, the, one of the big things that we, that just changed is we're, the town hall offices and, and all, it's not just town hall, all offices. They went from, previously it was 25% occupancy, now it's 50% occupancy in an office. So.
Is our town hall still, uh, fully closed to the public?
Eric, I have, um, I've talked to a few people and I'm getting, uh, town hall is closed to the public right now. But I hope to be getting department heads started back on Monday to start working on their plans with bringing in their department people who would start on Wednesday. So, um, they'll get that tonight or tomorrow.
The 50% capacity, I'm assuming.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've made some changes inside the building, moving people around so that, that it's easier to work out the schedules, so. But we're just going to leave, leave it to the people within that office to work out what schedule works for them.
So if I could.
Yeah, Paul.
Well, one of the things that most of my town halls that I work for are doing is to allow people to come in by appointment. And Sherburne seems to be doing that because at least when I needed something from the town clerk, I, I called her and made an appointment and went in to see her. So the public should have the same right to make an appointment and come in and see people by appointment in the period of time between being closed and being fully open.
Yeah, that's not the case, Paul. That is not the case right now.
We have been.
I, I'm suggesting that we do that.
Well, we, I, we have to assess what the state require. Right now, I don't think that's allowed.
We've been staffed, we, we've been staffed, um, with, uh, me, Diane, Jeannie's been in Jackie, town clerk's office, collector's office, occasionally in finance. So those offices we see routinely and have been answering phones and responding to phone inquiries. Haven't had any request for, um, an appointment. But we have had staff to go out to the door to, um, turn over boat permit or something like that.
Can I?
I just wanted to speak anecdotally, just, um, the Framing Department Public Works is open to the public right now. They've put a Plexiglas screening. They have signage and the space outs and it's, it's worked successfully so far. People have been adhering to the, um, you know, the space markers and, uh, the Plexiglas has worked well. And just in general, there's, yes, not seeing as much foot traffic anyway to the nature of it. But we've, we've assumed full, full-time hours at the Department of Public Works. Yeah, Jackie, please.
I, I just wanted to say that, um, we're trying to encourage people if they're paying something or they need a birth certificate or a farm pond even, to pay online and then, you know, we'll mail them the stuff, but also for appointments and things like that, for people that need to be swearing. I've been doing that. We just go outside. I've been, you know, people are setting up appointments, but I'm, I'm coming out to them and we're doing it in the parking lot.
And we've had very fortunate weather in the last few weeks. I mean, it might be drought conditions and dangerous and fires, but it's been convenient for things like this.
Okay. Uh, I, I know Sean, when he shows his face on camera, he usually wants to say something. That's the trick with Sean. But, uh, I don't know if you have anything. I was going to just mention the library is also contemplating now not opening to people entering the building. It's just too small in this current building. They are right now doing, and they've had a lot of people, um, take them up on it, the, the pickup, book pickup. And she's ordered to return book drop off bins that are being delivered, I think, next week. That, that will have no mechanism. You just slide it in the slots. You don't have to touch anything to return a book.
Okay, um, okay, although I think we've, we've talked about, you know, being open to the public. My, I guess the one thing I'd like to see at the next meeting is just, well, what's being done for, um, phase three, if any changes? And maybe from David, kind of a, um, formula or an idea of a schedule of, um, when town hall will open on some partial basis or how kind of, how we kind of execute that. I think those are kind of what we came out of this meeting. Marion, do you have a quick question?
Uh, yeah, I have a quick COVID comment. As we move into the, I don't know how phase three will go. I guess you can get a tattoo and a couple of extra things we can't get now. So that's good. But, uh, the big change is going to be in the fall when the weather gets cold and people can't do things outside. So thinking of town hall and the public buildings, I assume you're enforcing a mask rule. But it might be worth, um, looking at the ventilation patterns in town hall. Because it's been shown in a number of studies that, uh, the direction in which air moves in the building can make certain spots safer than others, less safe than others, I should say. And, you know, I, I know that Sean has nothing better to do than to go analyze the air movement in town hall. But it is just something to bear in mind. There may be a way to better ventilate some of the spots in town hall when we do open up more.
I've seen the modeling actually of that. And now when I enter buildings, I actually note where the air intakes are for the HVAC system. Because just don't stare near, don't stand near the, um, intakes. You've ever seen the modeling and that. Unfortunately, I don't know if you can change an HVA system. You have the intakes, you have the, the exhausts or whatever, the discharges. And I just don't see that, that changing, but I actually will, will note where they are, so I know where to stand.
I do too, but it might affect where people sit in town hall or where they, you know, wait in town hall when the weather gets cold. It's just something to bear in mind.
Thank you.
That's some of the, you know, finish model, modeling for the airflow is unbelievable.
Yeah, I know. I've seen the animations. It really, you could think where you stand. It really does. I've never thought about it before in my life. Paul, something quick?
I was going to say that the whole community is now eagerly waiting to see Marion's new tattoo. So.
All right, I think we have a COVID-19 update. Um, I'd ask like, you know, Daryl or Jeff, maybe talk about, um, or, or David, talk about a town hall opening and what we think we can do there and talk about a phase three. I think that's what we got out of that.
Yeah, and I think the next time we talk, because our next meeting is the ninth, we won't have a COVID because it's our joint advisory hearing. So I think that we should, uh, put a decent amount of time on the 23rd to talk about schools. Because I suspect that the school team is going to need, the two big issues will be the school team and, uh, the, uh, annual town meeting, um, configuration.
And Jeff, by then, I think, what I heard today, my wife heard as a teacher in Natick too, that the state's going to issue more guidance by the middle of July as well on school openings. So probably by July 23rd, there may even be more information about the schools.
Yes.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd like to move on to, uh, agenda item number eight. So this might generate some discussion. It's an item about the 2020 annual town meeting. Also, we have first a consideration of reducing the quorum, uh, consideration of splitting the warrant. And then just finalization of the, uh, date and meeting location. Um, is there any discussion we'd like to have about adjusting the 2020 quorum? I'm going to back on material here. I think, Paul, you had some, uh, some information about that. I'll tell you, I support reducing the quorum. I've been thinking about it a little bit, you know, what type of number you reduce it to. What did Dover go to? 16? Because it was 10% of their 160?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, that's what it is.
Yes.
I noted before that if all the select board and all advisory shows up, we have 14 right off the bat there. You know, and then the clerk shows up, that's 15, and then the moderator is 16. Um, I would consider something between 20 and 30 in that range there. I think is reasonable. You'll fulfill that. And like, Paul has noted and I agree with him, if you make it low enough, the more people do show up. Very discussion along here. Paul?
Couple, couple of points. The last couple of times that I've been at meetings where selectmen have voted this, they've gone to 50% of their quorum number. The moderator has to agree on this, has to be approved. So I hope that she's on board with this, so that whatever number we get to, we have to also have her saying yes to. Otherwise it's not effective. But in, given Sherburne's population and, and, uh, the unique features relating to Sherburne, I think 50% is, is a little high. That, that would be 50 voters. So I'm more in line with what you had indicated, Eric. Something closer to 25 or 30 would be fine. Remember that if we ask people to come to a meeting and they do come, and my experience has been sometimes they come in great numbers, much more than the quorum. But if they all come, we don't want to have to send them home and tell them, sorry, we're a couple of people short. We can't do any business. Go home and we'll have you come back again and run the same risk and the same exposure again when we're able to get everybody here. We don't want to force people to do that.
I'd like to hear from the moderator, um, what her thoughts are on the number.
Yeah, I, I would like to see the quorum reduced for the very reason that we don't want to have to come back twice for the same meeting. I mean, if people come, if we got to 80 people, we have to send them home. So I mean, I, I think any reasonable reduction, you know, Eric was talking about if the people who are basically running the meeting are there, we're almost to 20 people anyway. So, you know, 20, 25, 30, I, I don't have a strong feeling among those numbers. But I, I would like to see it reduced just to ensure that we can hold the meeting.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion and I'd like to make a motion to reduce the quorum for annual town meeting to 20.
Any?
I'll second that, George.
Okay, any other, for discussion before I take a vote?
Yeah, uh, you have to listen to the public first.
Oh.
By statute, you have to open it up and see if, what the voters say about this.
Okay, we do have a, um, a motion and a second. Um, is there any public comment? And, uh, I'll try to recognize you. If not, you can do the raise hand or the, or the group chat. Any public comment on this? Going once, going twice. And I thought it was a little bit more of a hotbed issue. I guess I was wrong.
I, I was going to make a select board comment though, which is that these aren't mutually exclusive topics. So it turns out that if you do split the warrant, and only thing you're doing is approving the operating budget, you tend to get way fewer people, I think. If you, if we do, which I, we'll see what we do in the next agenda item. If we make it the full warrant, which seems like we might do that, then you're very like, if there's other like planning board issues and other issues, you're, tends to get more people to come.
I suspect this voting articles will actually drive people, whereas.
Yes.
Three, four, I, 100%.
Exactly right. So there.
I think that was the whole point of moving it to August is so we wouldn't have to split the warrant. That was.
Exactly. I think, but they're all interrelated is my only point.
Yeah, I agree, Jeff.
I know you know that.
Okay, there does not appear to be any public comment on this. Um, I'll, I'll continue a roll call vote. Um, Jeff, how do you feel about the, the motion on 20 people?
Hi.
Um, Paul?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
Uh, Chuck?
I prefer 25, but I'll reluctantly vote I.
Yeah, I, ironically, I actually prefer 30, but I'm going to vote I as well, because I, I.
You have a split personality. You're okay. We'll count you twice. Don't worry.
My, my daughter doesn't like odd numbers. Sorry.
There you go. Although at 20, we'll get ties, but I'm sure we'll get. All right, so, um, let's move to pass. A second one is to consider, um, splitting the warrant. As in, uh, people seen the background material proposed, um, what the articles are. Is there any discussion on, uh, splitting the warrant between, and again, that goes hand in hand with the dates of it, that would be. But, um, do we do the essential items, uh, first and then later do the, um, the less essential items? So do we have one warrant together?
Uh, as I said earlier, I think that was the purpose of moving it to August is that we keep one warrant and only ask people to come out once.
I guess. Is someone else? I have a comment if someone else wants to go. I, I, I think what we need to do is look at the warrant. I, I don't think, I, I agree with George that we shouldn't split it. But we may find some things that we might just not need to vote on this year if it's some, some kind of policy. In other words, we could have it be one warrant, but there, we may try to limit some capital expenditures. We may find some sort of policy issues that aren't mandatory. We may try to review the warrant. And it's important because we have on the ninth, that's essentially what, you know, the public advisory, public hearing, they're, they'll be voting on the warrant that day, whatever's on the warrant. So, um, we may want to find a way to streamline it a little bit.
I see what you're saying. So the meeting on the ninth may change the actual articles that are under consideration.
Yes, because we could, we could sort of take no action. They might still be on the warrant, but we can vote no action maybe.
Wait a second, Jeff. I don't think the ninth is the public hearing with advisory. The ninth is to go over year end bills and transfers.
No, it's both, I think, because we have to do the advisory public hearing 30 days before the, uh, annual town meeting, I believe. Mary can correct me. And if we do the Saturday, uh, town meeting, it would be August 15th.
Yeah, Stephen, Stephen Sigh just asked if he could talk. Why don't we have him from advisory?
Stephen, please.
Hi, yeah, George is correct. Um, our current tentative plan is to have the public hearing on July 18th, which is a Saturday. And the, uh, July 9th meeting is just to do the year end transfers.
I don't think that works with the annual town meeting on the 15th.
Oh.
One of the two dates.
I don't think it has to be 30 days, Jeff. I don't think, I don't think you have, Jeannie actually has a better, Jeannie I know has a good idea of this. If Jeannie's on here of the timing.
It doesn't have to be 30 days. Have to be thirty days.
Say again, Mary?
It does not have to be thirty days. The the advisory meeting has to be end days such that their report can be in the hands of the voters end days before the town meeting. There's, there's no, the only thing that has to be thirty days is the town report, the annual town report.
That has, that has to be posted, I believe, twenty-one days before the town report. Before the town meeting.
Okay, I thought it was thirty, but whatever, you probably know.
And and Jeannie, how many days, Jeannie, do you know how many days the report has to be in the hands of the voters?
Ten days. It has to be mailed out, it has to be in the households ten days prior to town town meeting. So I think we figured out that if they have it, if we have it the fifteenth, it would have to be there, like, I'd have to mail it by the fourth, on the fourth.
So if I could.
Paul, please, go ahead.
So one of the things we've done in other towns was to first figure out what our motions are gonna be on the articles. And then we discovered there's a lot of articles that we want to indefinitely postpone or take no action on. For example, an article to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. And the finance director says, hey, we don't have any unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. Why are we keeping that article on the warrant? And so as you go through the warrant, you'll see some articles that are no longer needed. This, there's no support for, and so on. After you know that there's no support for some of those articles, then we should have the discussion, I guess, in July. Should we pair off some of these articles that the fin, the advisory committee doesn't support? Nobody on the selectman supports, there's no citizens who have spoken in favor of, why are we going forward with them? And including them on the warrant. So there's something to be said about doing doing the advisory hearing first, before we decide on whether or not we're gonna eliminate articles.
And I agree with you, and that's why I thought on the ninth, we're gonna discuss some of that. When, when can we discuss, like, we already talked about capital items, we might, might, you know, remove most, if not all, the capital items, it's based on unknown with um, with the income or the revenue stream this year. One of those discussions planned to take place.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
I think maybe what would make sense, the ninth is not gonna be, I don't think it's time to have a public hearing on the ninth. So I think at the, on the ninth, though, since we're gonna be together with advisory, we could go through the unpaid bills for the end of the year, then maybe we could have an informal discussion about the warrant. And then it's prepared for their public hearing that, as Stephen said, they're thinking about having on the eighteenth.
Okay, I like that idea. I I do think it's worth, if you're right, it's not a hearings, we don't vote on anything, but I think it's worth having a discussion on what the select board supports or doesn't support of, just due to the COVID changes and basically.
Or what we include versus what we don't include.
Yes. Okay, let's do that. Let's put that on the agenda for the ninth and.
That's up to us to vote what we want on and off the warrant, because we haven't voted a final warrant yet, and we could do that then. And then, because the public hearing for advisory is based on what we've approved for a warrant.
But we, without a hearing, we can't vote it, we can just discuss it. We can't vote on and off the warrant.
What, no, we vote beforehand what we include on the warrant, we then sign that warrant. Advisory then has a public hearing to discuss all those warrant articles. Do I have that correct, Mary?
Yes.
Okay.
What I, what I'm suggesting is before we sign the warrant, we actually go through the warrant.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about doing on the night.
I'm suggesting that, not just because there's some articles like, like some unpaid bills from prior fiscal years that 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 aren't needed. But sometimes, like, one of my towns had a twenty-page zoning stormwater management article. Twenty pages that was in the warrant, and we knew that that was gonna be three, four hour discussion. We don't want people sitting around, even in August, for three or four hours on one article. There's too many other things to go through. So at at some point, we collectively need to go through the warrant and put together a warrant that's gonna work for our voters, to be able to have them get in, vote what's needed, and get out. And if there's stuff that's what we call non-essential versus essential, if there's some non-essential stuff in there that's gonna be time-consuming, controversial, cause a lot of dissension, and all that kind of stuff, that may be something, i- if we could, to put it off to the next year's town meeting, when there's gonna be a vaccine, we hope.
Okay, then let me, let me, so, is no doubt that we can discuss that on the ninth. On the ninth, I'm asking this, an open question, can we then also finalize the date and location? So we're voting, we'll know if it's gonna be split or not split on the night.
We could vote on that tonight. I I think we've kind of come to the determination, we don't want to split the warrant. I think we should set a town meeting date, and then I think we should set a town meeting date tonight, between either the fifteenth or the twenty-fifth.
I agree. You mentioned that it'll be somewhat of a smaller warrant in some fashion. Okay, so I'll just take this in order. Does anyone want to make a motion about splitting the warrant or not? That's what's on here.
No, I don't think we need to.
Currently, it's not, it's not split, so it doesn't need to be any, any decision there. How about date and location? It's right now, it's proposed the twenty-fifth and the fifteenth.
I guess my experience is, a lot of people in Sherburne go, when, when does school start, George? We don't know.
School starts, as of now, school's supposed to start September first. I don't know whether that's gonna change, there's been some suggestions for, I mean, September second, I'm sorry, Wednesday, September second. But one thing I was gonna say on that, I think the middle of August is gonna be, I think the later in August we go, more people are gonna be back from, if people are going away. I, I would, I would encourage a weekday meeting over a weekend meeting. Mary, did you?
Um, I I would strongly encourage having the meeting at an outside location. It's just safer for everyone. The state has sent out guidelines recommending that if possible, towns hold their meetings outside. And that would then be on a weekend in the daytime.
And Paul had sent out some background material about many communities that have done that successfully.
Well, this is choice, though, between the fifteenth is a Saturday versus a Tuesday on the twenty-fifth, that's what's on the agenda, I don't.
Well, the original, the original date, the twenty-fifth, was in the auditorium.
Oh, okay.
I would rather have it outside too, Mary, I agree with you on that. What about, can we, Stephen, can somebody unmute Stephen Si? I'd like to hear what advisory thinks of this as well.
I think it's unmuted. Yeah, I mean, advisory, we haven't actually discussed like what we would like in terms of the location of town meeting. I think we were basically just waiting on you guys to make that determination. So I can't speak for the board, I personally would be of the same opinion as the moderator, which is that an outdoor meeting during the daytime on a Saturday would be ideal. I think when we, when we picked the July eighteenth date for the public hearing, I think the the dates that we had heard bandied about were the, that Tuesday, the August twenty-fifth, or else the Saturday before, which was the twenty-second. And so that's why we had chosen July eighteenth as being thirty days before either of those dates. So I didn't, I didn't know, is there, is there a reason why the twenty-second is out of the question?
Jackie?
Can I speak? Yeah, so the issue is, is that the legislature still has not decided what they're doing for early voting and for the the primary, the state primary, which is September first. So, right now, they're looking at early voting in person, which would start April twenty-second, which is Saturday. So there's no way that I could do, I could do town meeting, I'm gonna have to be, I'm gonna have to be managing early voting in person.
So if I could.
Yeah, Paul.
First, legislators I've talked to on behalf of MMA, they're gonna do early voting in September. That, that, everyone. Everybody I talked to is heading in that direction. They just haven't got themselves to the point where they're passing anything. They're fooling around with remote meetings themselves, so they're holding sessions of the general court remotely and figuring out how to make that work. The thought I would have is that of the town meetings that I've been at, the ones on Saturday actually work better than I think the ones that start at five o'clock in the afternoon. But they both work well. So I would suggest that we pick the first Saturday that doesn't interfere with the town clerk and set that as our, as our date, ten o'clock in the morning, and get it done.
Fifteenth. Sean Colleen has his metaphorical hand raised. Comment?
I I have a couple comments. Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
Yes.
One, I love the idea of doing it on one of the fields. We, we almost would have to rent a tart, a tent, though, so that we don't get rained out. The other option is Seven Butler Street, because we can clean this place out and have every single door open, and it's essentially outdoors, but it's undercover and well lit if it was gonna be that evening. And you won't get rained out. And then I was, I was just gonna caution against a, a mid-August Saturday. I mean, a lot of people aren't getting a vacation in July, and I would think a lot of people are gonna try and check out in August.
I thought, yeah, I thought the same thing, that people might cram it in, but at some point, we're just gonna have to balance between the early voting and and everything else. One of my concerns with like, I think Laurel Field and the Dover Sherburne Field is the, is the ADA accessibility of that. Some of that, and actually, Seven Butler Street would, I think, have better accommodations. Does anyone have any thoughts about the DPW garage?
Mary, what do you, do you have any thoughts on that, or?
I, yeah, I had a question for Sean, because I I didn't quite hear exactly what you just said. Are you saying that the, it would be a virtual tent because the, the sides, the doors would be, I'm, I'm unclear about that.
I would say that you could make the case that it would, yeah, this would, this building, two sides of this building completely open. Because there's about twelve doors, so it would, to me, it seems that that would qualify as outdoors. But well lit, safe, it is ADA compliant, we have ADA compliant bathrooms.
How about parking?
Parking is pretty good. I don't know what I'd do with the trucks, I'd probably put the trucks off-site, so there was plenty of parking. It's very well lit.
I have a tool that I can put in number of people and amount of space and how far separated I want them to be. And it will come back and tell me how many people I can fit in a particular space. It does it instantaneously. So we need to be sure that we could get everybody in there. If we get, supposing we get a hundred people.
Okay, you're not gonna find a tent bigger than my building. You're not gonna find a tent bigger than my building unless you just plan on having an open field.
Well, a lot of places have done open fields.
Yeah, if I could, I I'm opposed to the use of tents. The way, the way we've done it elsewhere is that we have a rain date. If we know a day is gonna be rainy, we have a rain date that that we resort to. We don't want tents be, for two reasons. First of all, you want sunlight because sunlight turns out to be very effective in dealing with this COVID nineteen business. I saw a study that within like thirty-four minutes, sunlight will kill the COVID nineteen. That study's online, it's reported.
It's not correct. It, Marion can tell you, but it's not, it's not true.
I don't think we have to go into the science of it, but outdoor is, we do know that, that that's well established, outdoor is safer for whatever reasons, be it airflow or lifespan or UV. I think we can establish that.
And you, you also want to have the airflow. And you don't get, I was at one town meeting where there was no wind, and everybody was nervous. I was at another town meeting where it was very windy, everybody felt comfortable. You put people inside a building or inside a tent, you're cutting down that, that critical flow of air.
Yes.
So I, and you don't need to worry about weather because you can always have the rain date.
Yeah, the other thing about, even if two sides can be opened, I guess, having just heard the discussion of the intake and outflow of air in a closed building, it, you're, there's only one way sort of that the air is going there, and do you want to be downwind of it? So I don't know, I mean, it, I think maybe a totally open might be preferable.
I think that's what makes the most sense, it sounds like, is to have an open field. And I have a feeling, parking-wise, Dover Sherburne on the turf is probably the most, parking and ADA compliant. I mean, I don't know how people, Laurel's a little rougher around the edges, and I think people will be able to get in and out, on and off of the field at DS a lot easier.
Can I speak?
Yes, Mary.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I would, I would hope that we would, I mean, the people who are gonna be sort of orchestrating this whole thing should all get together and, you know, meet and really figure this out, but I would like to hear from, you know, Sean and the other people who are gonna be implementing the, the physical logistics of this thing to, you know, if, once we've picked a couple of possibilities for venues, then how would this be handled? How, I'd like to hear how crowd control is going to be handled. How are people going to enter? How are people going to exit? These are all things that are important for, you know, maintaining safety. And, you know, I don't feel competent to make decisions about that, and, but there are people here who can.
Well, the one good thing I know about, about the, um, the athletic fields is that they have the graduation every there, so it's just some precedent of handling crowds, handling a presentation, and so on. Jeff, do you think?
So I was gonna add two things. One is the AstroTurf is big, because I coached soccer for sixteen years too. You haven't an AstroTurf as big, because it's got drainage pipes through it, as you well know. The other thing is, we have a model, because Dover's annual town meeting is Monday on the football field, next month, it's coming Monday. So, we'll see how it make out. Now, they, Mary can explain, they've got one crazy rule they're implementing, where if they get, what's the number, Mary, eighty people?
Sixty.
Sixty people. If they get more than sixty, they're shutting it down.
Because they are maintaining an extremely large perimeter around each person. They're going beyond, well beyond six feet.
So the quorum, the quorum is eighteen, they need at least eighteen. But if they get sixty-one people, they're closing the meeting down, which I think is crazy.
Would vet any logistics of this about spacing and so on like that? The COVID team that you're a member of, do you think that they could sooner rather than later actually vet some logistics of what reasonable spacing is? And what we can kind of plot out there?
Absolutely, I do, yes. Because they're doing that for the schools, and they're doing it for every, every different venue we're trying to consider.
And that's what I would like to see, because I would like to see a reasonable spacing. I would honestly, I I would not like to see it limited to eighty people. As Paul indicated at the beginning of this conversation, turning people away is the least desirable option of this. I'd like to at least accommodate, you know, over a hundred, to be honest with you. And opinion from the COVID team of what we can get away with on spacing and see what we can plot out there. It seems like the conversation's going toward August fifteenth on the athletic field, with an opinion from the COVID team. Am I hearing that correctly? Is there anyone on the select board specifically that disagrees with that?
No, I would make a motion to that effect, that we set town meeting for August fifteenth at the Dover Sherburne football field.
At ten AM?
At ten AM.
Do you want to take Paul's suggestion and make that motion and have a rain date included in the motion?
That's tough, because the next Saturday, Jackie can't make it. You know, that's the last Saturday that there is.
Let me ask a question. I know we've, there's been weird laws and messages, it's about Sundays for many, many years. Could you have, like, could you have a rain date, could you have it on a Sunday, if Saturday doesn't work?
You can. We had that as an alternate date in another town. Took a little bit of research to figure that all out, but you can have a rain date on a Sunday.
Okay.
Have it at ten o'clock, you have to do it at noon time.
Okay. Mary, did you have a comment? I saw a year before I finished my motion.
Yeah, just, if you had to put a rain date, you could always do it at five o'clock on the following Tuesday. But I I personally would prefer the Sunday, I think it's.
So why don't I do this? I'll move, we have town meeting on August Saturday, yes.
George, another alternative in terms of the rain date would be the twenty-ninth. Jackie can't do the.
Another alternative in terms of the rain date would be the twenty-ninth. Jackie can't do the twenty-second.
I think she'd also be dur, dur, early voting on the twenty-ninth, right Jackie? Is it two weekends?
I don't know, but the, like, I'm, I'm gonna be insanely busy. It's, there's gonna be a huge push for early voting in person for seven days. And then a huge push for mail-in voting. Then I still have to set up the election for Tuesday. For a regular election. So like, like Saturday, like the two days, three days before the, like, that, that would only be like a last ditch thing because you guys will have to peel me off the ceiling.
Mr. Chair.
I think I'll make a motion for, to set the town meeting for Saturday, August fifteenth at ten AM with a rain date of, uh, at the Dover Sherburne Football Field with a rain date of Sunday, August sixteenth at noon at the Dover Sherburne Football Field.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Can I make a suggestion?
Okay. I'd like, I, I'd like to hear from Sean. He has spoken, he's um asked to chime in real quick and I'm the first to say I'm not always great at seeing the hands up and his hands stayed up, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I never took it down. Uh, one, i- it's not just rain. You guys, it's, this is during the day, August fifteenth. I don't know what the average temp in August is, but the middle of a football field, I've, I've done double sessions out there. It's hot.
Turf.
So, you know, if it's ninety plus, you need to cancel. And again, I, I would, I, I would, y- you don't have a rain date if you do it in my garage. I'll, I'll leave it at that. But I, I think we should just let the COVID team look at what the best thing to do in the middle of August is. I mean, you could have a thunderstorm and wipe the whole thing out.
In fact, I, I do want to take this vote and finish this vote, but yeah, I would like Jeff to actually uh consider a little bit more detail of this at, at the COVID team and uh.
Well, we have been pricing, there's a difference between a tent and a canopy. We've been pricing for Woodhaven actually, canopies, which are tents with no sides. So that would cost probably, depending on the size we get, it could be two or three hundred dollars a day for a tent.
I'm just messing logistics with the spacing and that and maybe a consideration, the DPW garage.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Chuck, you had something you want to say while we're in?
George, to consider a friendly amendment on the backup rain date to not start at noon, to start at one because of religious services.
Okay, that's fine.
Somebody come, you know, if there's an eleven o'clock service, I ain't gonna make it at noon, so.
It means people are checking in at eleven anyway, so yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Checking in at noon.
That's, that's fine. I accept that amendment.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call vote. I'm doing what I see. Uh, Jeff, how do you vote?
Hi.
Uh, Paul, how do you vote?
Hi.
Uh, George, how do you vote?
Uh.
And Chuck, how do you vote?
I.
I vote I as well. That's it for now. Remain flexible. As I said, I'd like the advisory from the COVID team and uh.
I think Nancy may have a question.
Oh, Nancy, sorry. I, I struggle with the Zoom.
She's late, yeah, you are. Is she muted?
She's muted.
David, I'm not able to unmute her. Can you unmute her?
Might be self-muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to ask you, Eric, if y'all would reconsider your number for your, for, for the optics, because if fourteen of you or more that are involved in the decision-making are overwhelming the quorum, it, it, there aren't enough people to, even if the selectmen disagree with advisory, there aren't enough people to outnumber advisory. So I'd like you to go back and consider making the, the quorum at least twenty-five or thirty, which would have public input in some way to um either to change, to change your vote or to support a, otherwise the, whatever they vote is gonna overwhelm if you don't get extra people there. So I, I think that the, and if it means that you can't have the meeting, i- it's a democracy. I think you need to have enough people that um there's public input. And if it's all the committees that are voting the warrants and all of that, I think it doesn't look good. So I would ask you to reconsider your quorum number.
All right, the only discussion point I'd like to add that before I take any discussion is that Dover's already eighteen, so they're already less and they're a town fifty percent larger than Sherburne. I'll be interested to see on Dover's town meeting how many actually show up. I do subscribe to, to Paul's uh theory that the lower you make it, the more people show up, because I've known of, I can't remember, but there's another town that did that for all of their meetings, so you're having trouble making quorums. I mean, it's so low that actually they've exceeded their previous quorum every single time. I think it's unlikely that it'll actually be twenty, but does anyone have any thoughts before I move on? Anyone from the select board, then I'll talk to Mary.
We already voted on this and we had a discussion and I don't know why we're bringing up a discussion that we already completed.
Okay. Now, I agree with that. Um, I'll keep an open mind. We're gonna be meeting again on the ninth. Marion, do you have anything quick?
I just wanted to say, I think that's a misunderstanding. The quorum doesn't mean the maximum number. It's the minimum number.
Yeah, I think it's unlikely to get twenty, to be honest with you. In fact, I, I subscribe to Paul's theory that the lower you make it, the more show up.
I'll just, I'll just give you one more data point. So I think war, I think, I believe the Dover warrant is just mandatory items. So they had a pre, a public pre-warrant Zoom meeting and they only got sixteen people, including their advisory and select board to uh, to attend this meeting. So they didn't meet their quorum for their pre um meeting Zoom.
We have twenty-eight on, just for this meeting.
I know, they, they only have, they only have three select, but not five, remember? And I don't know how big Dover warrant is.
Then, then, they have to listen to form. Okay, I would like to move on unless there's anything absolutely critical about this. I think, and I'm sorry Nancy, but George is right. We did discuss in the, on this. I, I strongly doubt that we're gonna get twenty people. I, I really think that we, I'm more worried about the maximum. I'm more reserved about the eighty maximum Dover set and I've, I have no intention on, on supporting a maximum on this. Anyway, that's.
Throw out my idea. The thing that, that uh Jeff just mentioned, all of my towns have what are called virtual town meetings first. In which you have all the articles called, all the presenters make their arguments, all the slides shown, all virtually, online, like a week before. It's filmed, it's recorded, it plays on cable endlessly. So when you get the town meeting, somebody doesn't get up and say, what's this article about? It's all been covered. It's all there, all done. There's no need for any of that discussion. I think we should organize the same.
I think we should talk about that on the ninth with, with advisory. I think that's a good thing to put that on the agenda item for the ninth.
I agree, Eric. I think it's time to move on.
I think it's time to move on. Absolutely. I thought, okay, um, next agenda item. I'd like to get an update from Sean Colleen about uh roadside tree removals um between town and ever source. You're muted. Someone's muting him.
Sorry about that. So this came up um partially because we just haven't, nobody's heard from me on trees for a while, because we didn't have any hearings. We didn't have town meeting to discuss it. And it came to a head the, over last weekend because we had a large oak tree come down on Mason Hill. Knocked a couple hundred people out for part of the day and a handful of people for most of the day. So I was asked to give an update. So it, this is just kind of a snapshot of where we are. I don't really have much of a presentation and not much has changed. But uh, to remind everyone, w- we're estimating now that we've probably lost somewhere in the vicinity of a thousand mature roadside oaks. Pines as well, but a, a majority of it's been oaks, uh mostly due to the, to the gypsy moth infestation, some winter moth infestation and a couple of years of drought. Those trees are still dying. We, we've cleared out of the drought, but, but the, the harm was done to many of them. Those old trees take a while and then they just kind of give up. So what we saw on the, the south side of town, we're now seeing more on the, the north and east side a year or two later. And, and it's still continuing on the south side, of course. The um, just last year, during the spring, once the, once the trees leafed out, we went out and marked over, over three hundred trees that we marked and got into our GPS map. We estimated during the season, it's a little bit tough while the leaf cover's still out there, but oaks will sometimes show it pretty well. We just estimated that we probably lost another hundred. And these are strictly roadside trees. We're obviously losing a lot more just off the road that aren't being counted uh that are, that are private or out in the forests. By the end of fiscal twenty-one, whenever that is, the uh, we will have spent over two hundred thousand of town funds i- in just the course of basically three fiscal years. And that has been strongly supplemented by EverSource. EverSource has been an incredible partner in this. They were actually warning us a couple of years before most of us saw it. Because they're in town every, every year doing pruning and removals. Uh, and, and they were really pushing. They were actually dragging the town along because we were pretty resistant to their advice just, just three, four years ago. So a little bit of our catch-up has, has been due to the fact that we, we weren't ready to go. We weren't ready to start getting these trees down until every last leaf was off. I don't know, I don't have their numbers because they're, they're, I'm not privy to their numbers, but I estimate that they've spent at least four, if not five times what we have. So if, if you do the math, we've probably done about a million dollars worth of tree work in town uh between us and EverSource. And that, and that's gonna continue for at least another year or two because of what we lost and the inventory of trees that are still up that, that need to come down. Go ahead, Chuck, sorry.
I, I know that uh EverSource has a terrific uh rate with uh Stanley Tree. What, how many trees do you think that translates into the eight hundred, thousand or a million dollars they've spent? How many trees has EverSource brought down? Uh, ballpark is fine. I'm just trying to get a sense of me, order of magnitude.
I'm guessing they pulled four or five hundred trees down already.
Chuck, you have to include, um, so the cost of a tree includes a police detail, depending on where it is. So the, the Stanley cost is only, we were estimating when Sean and I, we pulled a hundred thousand dollars out of the stabilization fund last year, as you probably recall. We were estimating the huge trees on Greenwood were probably, I don't know, Sean, four thousand dollars to take, five thousand dollars to take those huge trees down. But we were estimating twenty-five hundred dollars a tree, I thought, ballpark for a more standard sized tree.
Yeah.
It's definitely impressive.
The police detail cost. Police detail cost was around a quarter of the twenty-five percent more, twenty-five to thirty percent more than the Stanley cost for police detail.
It's definitely impressive. And what do you think, Sean? What do you think the, do you have a rough estimate on the town's cost for FY twenty-one and even twenty-two? And I'm not putting one.
Well, twen, I mean, twenty-one, we still have some of that hundred thousand that we're, we're working with. I would guess between now and the end of twenty-one, we'll spend another seventy, eighty thousand. There's, there's, we, there's the budget funds that we already have and the um remaining funds we have, and we need to spend that. We're, we're, we're really not keeping up. But EverSource is also coming back in pretty strong. Unfortunately, it, it, you know, it, it, it almost gets a little frustrating. I'm sure it does for the neighborhoods. The, one of the hardest hit neighborhoods or, or one of the most worked neighborhoods a year ago was Mason Hill. Stanley, if you lived on Mason Hill, you saw red Stanley Tree trucks every day for three or four weeks at a huge cost to EverSource. They paid that whole bill. And by the end of August, you, there was some massive trees that, that, that had no leaves on. And di, and obviously didn't leaf out this year. The tree that fell this weekend didn't, it was marked last year. It actually, you know, it died because of the gypsy moths, but it had fifty years of rot. It was, it was a triple trunk and two of them are still standing. It was, it was a huge tree. EverSource actually wanted to take that tree down three years ago and we wouldn't let them.
That's, that's the problem right there, Sean, is that, I mean, that tree that went down, I know how long it took because I was one of the neighborhoods affected with no power. Is that you ended up having to pay your guys overtime to go clean up a tree over a weekend when, you know, this tree probably should have been taken down a couple of years ago when EverSource was out there before, but people, it, it's just frustrating that the town's spending more by taking down tree, by having to clean up trees when they fall on the weekends. And you have a lot of angry residents. Trust me, I heard from some of them that day because, as I didn't have power either, but it's, it's uh, it's better to stay ahead of it as, as we all know, because it's more costly if we wait.
Was this tree proposed, taken down, but out of hearing, but wasn't, was opposed?
I don't know a hundred percent if that tree was proposed, but the, the tone of the proposals two or three years ago, they were, they were basically getting shot down before they got to that point. And uh, if, I mean, if it had leaves on it, they were shutting it down on a, on a, on uh, in, in the tree hearings. There, there was probably forty or fifty trees. And I, and I'm not saying they all should go. Again, EverSource has a, a little different perspective on the risk. Uh, they do the risk analysis for their wires. So, so there's gonna be trees, sometimes we're, we can calculate the risk and, and we're okay with it. Uh, but you can't be hard the other way and just say it's still living. It's gotta stay. Because that, that tree, I mean, it, it may be anecdotal, but that tree cost us a lot of money.
As much as I know it cost us to get out on, on Saturday in overtime, I guarantee it costs EverSource more to re-hook up a wire on a Saturday in overtime.
Oh, it cost them sick, way more. They had, by the time we got out of there, and I didn't even get to do the cleanup, I wanted to. I brought the guys in thinking we could. And, you know, sometimes you finish doing the cleanup and you're wondering where the EverSource guys were. There was five bucket trucks waiting for us to get out of the way. So we had to just push the stuff off to the side of the road and get out of their way because, I mean, George didn't have power. There was a lot of people that didn't have power, so.
Better get on it quick then, that is kidding. All right, thank you very much, Sean, for that update. There's no further discussion. I'd like to move on just to, to close out um our administrative items. And that is great. And just, and also thank EverSource on there as well. So I think they're doing a, a, you know, a benefit to the town.
Big benefit.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, item number ten, uh administrative routine items. Is there any update from the uh finance director?
Yeah, um, again, I, I talked about this at our last meeting, but um tonight we really need to move forward with this. Because we didn't have our annual town meeting, um, our FY twenty, twenty-one budget um has not been approved. So what we need to do is file with the DOR for deficit spending approval. So we have to do it for each month that we have not approved our budget. So we have to do it in July. Once that appro, is approved, then we have to do it again for August. Um, but again, one month at a time. Um, in your packet, you'll see the calculation. And the calculation, um, as recommended by the DOR is to take one twelfth of your FY twenty-twenty budget. So I went ahead and calculated that. And um as we talked about at the last meeting, we are also going to add to that um thirty thousand dollars for implementing the COLA. Um, we talked about that and you voted last, last time to um implement the COLA for all the staff. And also to pay a middle sex retirement so that the town of Sherburne will be able to take advantage of that quick pay. So um what we need to do is get the um select board to approve this. And um once they, if you approve it, and then Jackie will need to um certify the vote. And then tomorrow I need to go in and upload the vote and my calculations to the DOR. Uh, they have reviewed this ahead of time. Uh, they know that we're doing this tonight and they, they feel very comfortable that our numbers will get approved, but we have to go through this formality, so.
Is there any discussion or motion at the board? Chuck?
A quick question. Sure, what's the uh, I think Chuck, this is a million dollars for the middle sex retirement. What's, what is the discount we get for the early payment ballpark?
Ballpark is about twenty-five thousand. Definitely worth it.
Yeah, definitely. Any other discussion or motions?
I'll, I'll make a motion. Oh, Paul, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see you.
I was gonna make a motion to approve the deficit spending plan.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Uh, do a roll call vote. Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Um, you guys shift around where you appear. Paul?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
Chuck? Chuck?
Hi.
And I am aye as well. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Getting your certification, Jackie.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, is there any report from the town administrator? David?
The only item we have is just to ratify what you voted in executive session last time, which was, um, on June eleventh, twenty twenty unanimously, the board voted five to nothing to, uh, enter into a three-year agreement with Zach Ward for position of fire chief. I made the updates to the contract and Zach and I signed that contract on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty. And so you just need to ratify the acceptance of what you had voted so that it's recorded in open session.
So it's educated me. We take a vote in open session, or do we like, we have to come in and each sign this, or how does this work?
No, you can just, you can vote, um, that you're ratifying the select board's, um, executive session approval.
Any motion?
I, I move that we ratify the contract as signed by David Williams.
Perfect wording.
Okay, that's a move and second. Take a roll call. Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
Chuck?
Hi.
And I am aye as well. Oh, congratulations to Zach, and, uh, best wishes to him. I don't know if he's still out there on the fire, but best wishes to him and his, uh, his crew as well.
Yeah, he will be back in at some point for an official penning. Arranged by the fire department.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Okay. On, uh, on us, are there any, I have a select board report, but does anyone else have any reports?
We're, one very quick one. Dover Sherburne High School had their graduation tonight. I think they, social distancing and they, they, but I did go and record a speech for it last week. So we still did participate in their graduation as we usually do, went over to the high school and, and recorded it there for them. So that's, uh, congratulations to the Dover Sherburne class of two twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Great.
Absolutely. Um, I had a report, or, um, both at, um, my MMA subcommittee meeting on infrastructure and Sean Colleen also sent me a message about it, where the, uh, the state legislature is considering, first, they were gonna pass a thirty million dollar chapter ninety.
Three hundred million.
Uh, but I believe they're now considering a, a, reducing it back down to two hundred million. And we're not there. And I think I'd like to reach out. I'd like David to, uh, to reach out to, um, our state legislatures and basically put a letter of encouragement, basically to make it three hundred million. I think it's something that's important. I think it's more important now, as maybe this economy does need stimulus, and infrastructure is a classic way that's done. It was done about, you know, ten years ago. And, uh, I do believe that three hundred million would be appropriate in this particular case allocation. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so David, I mean, if you could draft a letter and just, uh, you know, reach out to, um, what's his name? We just, um, you know, our, our.
Valinsky and Rebecca Roush.
Yes, exactly.
Can you, can you just vote that you're authorizing me to send it out?
Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, you're good at motions.
So I move that we authorize the town administrator to send a letter to the legislature and our, our representatives in the general court to support three hundred million as opposed to two hundred million for chapter ninety.
A second? Okay, uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Um, Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am aye as well. Sean, did you have something you wanted to add?
I have, yeah, I have one more select board report. I'm gonna let Sean start, and then I have a proclamation to read afterwards.
Eric? Eric, it's part of the roll call vote. I, I don't think you called my name. Maybe I'm getting tired, but I wrote on.
You know, I'm sorry, yeah, I do it by, I see you. Okay, Chuck, sorry. I knew, I thought I felt I'm gonna miss someone. These Zoom windows move on me, by the way.
It's a game, Eric. You gotta try to find everybody.
I literally do it just based on going left to right, but.
Go ahead, Sean.
All right, so sorry to jump in it on, on this stage, but I, I, I need to get this in and, uh, so next Tuesday, uh, is John McAvoy's last day. We mentioned it last time, so he's, he's retiring. He's been here for forty-two years. I want to just list the directors, and I, and I hope I got this list right. When he started, he was working for Lyle Melman, and then Mike Paxus, Jamie Pianca, Paul Scott, Gary Keller, Ed Wagner, and now myself. So John's seen a lot of people come, go. He's seen a, a lot while he's been here. It's a testament to his dedication to the town. And I've been lucky enough to have two and a half years with him while, while I've been in this position to try to suck as much information from him as I could. Because there's a lot of history up there. Uh, it was a much different town forty-two years ago, I can imagine. I don't really remember it, but, uh, so I, uh, that's about all I have to say. Obviously, with, you know, the, the state of where we're at now, we, we couldn't really do much. He's not the type that we really could have done a party for anyway, but, uh,
If you want me to, Sean, I can read this proclamation from the town. I'm gonna do for him.
Please.
This Commonwealth of Messages, it's Town of Sherburne, a proclamation, whereas John McAvoy has been a valued employee of the town since August second, nineteen seventy-eight. Whereas John has worked tirelessly, doing many jobs with the DPW, working at times day and night through the worst of, worst of weather for several days in a row. Whereas John has always been happy to help out Woodhaven Recreation Farm, Pond Town Hall, Police, and many residents along the way. Whereas John has worked for many directors and has always been ready to take over during the transitions between directors. Whereas the town will surely miss John for his countless contributions as an employee, and show of workmanship and longtime loyalty. Now therefore, we, the selectmen of the Town of Sherburne, on behalf of all its citizens, extend their utmost appreciation and boundless gratitude to John McAvoy for his years of dedicated service to the town and its residents. And witness whereof, we have caused the seal of the town to be affixed to this proclamation on this twenty-fifth day of June in the year two thousand twenty.
Very nice.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, um, I'll take a roll call. I'm just gonna add a comment, where I think he also worked for Bill Bernard, who is my neighbor in the seventies as well. And John made a comment to me, where he's worked for, um, eight DPW directors and twelve town administrators, so.
Cheaper by the dozen, as they say.
All right, Jeff, do you vote?
I, I vote aye.
And Paul?
Hi.
And George? And Chuck? And I vote aye as well. Very nice. And, and, uh, just send our regards to him as well. I plan on stopping by on Tuesday around three o'clock just to say, shake his hand, or whatever I can do. I don't even know anymore.
Ask him this question for me, Sean. I believe those dates are right, that he was smart enough to start with the DPW after the blizzard of seventy-eight. Which was in February of that year, and he started in August, I believe, so. We had forty inches of snow, as many of you recall, in thirty-six, uh, twenty-four hours.
The old timers, I know, uh, Raymond DPW still tell me stories about the blizzard of seventy-eight. All right, well, thank you very much. Um, if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn, adjourn our open session, move on to executive session. We do not plan to reopen into open session. I'll read this off. I'm sure I'll screw it up. We're gonna talk about two items. Item number one, under Master in the Laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, subsection three, to discuss a strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. And the challenge so declares, and that chair, the chair does declare on the library. Item two, Master in the Laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A six, to consider purchase exchange, lease of property, real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiation position of the public body, and the chair does so declare. Uh, do I have a, a second?
Eric, if you look at the second page of the agenda, you have this script if you, just as a, sorry, I don't know if you saw that. It says I need a second and a roll.
That is what I just, okay. Oh, I read the whole.
You just read it.
I stopped at my little heart there. I need a second and a roll call vote. Okay, I think it was seconded by, uh, Mr. Waldron. Uh, motion is seconded by Mr. Waldron. Having a second, I'll now call roll call vote. Um, Mr. Waldron?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And Chuck?
Hi.
And I am aye as well. Um, we are now leaving, um, leaving open session and executive session.